Good afternoon Vacaville, going to start the meeting for the city council. Today is July fourteenth, the time is six P M. Can we have a roll call?
Council agency authority member Harris?
Here.
Mashburn?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vice Chair Beatty?
Here.
Mayor Chair Rolet?
I am here. If you would please stand with me for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please repeat with me the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is item three. Mister City Manager, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No, we do not, sir.
Move approval.
Thank you. Second, Member Harris and Mashburn, roll call vote please.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Mashburn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beatty?
Aye.
Mayor Rolet?
Aye. We'll move to item four, approval of amendments. I'll entertain motion.
Move approval.
Second.
I got it. Harris and Mashburn, roll call please.
Councilmember Harris?
Yeah.
Mashburn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beatty?
Aye.
Mayor Rolet?
Aye. We'll move to item five, presentations. I see none. We'll move to item six, consent calendar. Anyone from the council that would like to pull any item off the consent? Hearing none. Anyone from the public that would like to pull any item off the consent? Anybody from the public?
I have two forehands. I'll open caller ending in four seven five.
Thank you.
You got me?
Yes, I can hear you perfectly.
Okay, good. Look, unfortunately, we've reached a point where the future of our country, of our lives, is at stake, and everyone, you guys, every citizen, needs to do everything they can to ensure that we have a good future, not a horrible.
Sir, now?
Yes.
So, all we're doing right now is, uh, we're gonna pull an item off the consent calendar. If you wanna...
My apologies.
Oh, no problem.
My apologies. Yeah, yeah, I, yes, have any way.
It will be coming up if you wanna speak, uh, under public comment, okay?
Thank you. Got it.
Yes, no problem, sir. Next caller?
I have caller ending in two two seven. I'll open their mic.
Thank you.
Hi, yes, this is Amber Robitaille, Brown Street resident. I'm actually calling in to, um, discuss, uh, six I.
Okay, I'll pull six I, and then, uh, we'll, we'll bring you back, okay, Amber?
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on the line from the public?
I have Wendy Brecken. I'll open her mic.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Wendy Brecken. I'd like to pull six B.
Six B as in boy Wendy?
Boy, yes.
Thank you, Wendy. I've gotta pull. Any other callers from public comment?
No hands.
Okay, with that, I would entertain motion for six A, six C, D, E, F, G, and H.
Move approval.
And I'll second it. So Harris and Rolet, can I have roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mashburn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beatty?
Aye.
Mayor Rolet?
Aye. And I'm gonna go out of order. I'm just gonna go the way the caller's called in. So I'm gonna first go to six I, and, uh, you can open up Amber's mic again, please.
Amber, I believe I've opened your mic.
Amber, are you there? Amber? Amber, are you there?
She might wanna press star six.
Amber? Okay, you know what? Why don't we start with item six B? Can you open Wendy's mic?
Can you call back in? Call back in on the other number.
Hello?
Hi Wendy, go ahead. We can hear you.
Um, okay, for six B, um, I just had some questions of staff. Um, it's confused. I- in this item, it looks like, uh, you're trying to get a one point nine million dollar, um, grant, federal grant, and that's gonna be used for, um, infrastructure, it's transportation infrastructure, and I wasn't really clear what exactly the infrastructure was. And then, um, the Measure M money was going to be used for affordable housing, and, um, so my question on that was what project, what Measure M projects are not going to be, um, are kinda offline now that we have to do specific infrastructure for affordable housing? Um, also, if you could just address how the Measure M money, I don't understand how it's being incentivized. Is it going to be money given to the developer? And if so, is that a gift to public funds? And, um, with the project being federalized, meaning the, um, road project being federalized, is that gonna cost a lot more than if we were just doing our own, um, projects, you know, city projects without the federal government? Um, also, since there's a three million dollar shortfall in the project, um, I don't understand how one point nine million is going to get the project completed, and if the project is not completed, then how, um, then we're gonna have to give back the one point nine million in federal funds, so, um, we lose that money. So those are my questions.
Okay, thank you, Wendy. Director Cunningham, would you like to help us with that one?
Sure, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, Wendy, thank you for the question. Um, I'll try to, uh, try to answer it in the same order. As, as far as the Measure M money, um, as you know, the, the city council allocates, uh, two million dollars a year of Measure M for roadway rehabilitation, and we've been, we've been using that for the past three years. Um, that is the Measure M money that we're talking about using here. Now, bear with me as I'll, I'll explain what, this is basically a fund swap, and I'm gonna explain how it works, uh, as briefly as possible. There's a program, it's the Suburban Housing Incentive Pool, or SUBHIP, uh, and that's a program that was put together by, uh, M T C using federal transportation dollars. Um, the particular dollars that we're using are congestion, are C Mac congestion management, uh, air quality money. The whole purpose of that program is to incentivize the delivery or production of affordable housing specifically within priority development areas, which the Allison area is a priority development area. So again, the purpose of that money is to incentivize developers to construct, private developers to construct affordable housing. Um, and so, that is what, that, Vacaville was awarded one point nine million dollars on the premise that that's what we were going to be able to do within the Allison P D A. The problem is, it is, you are correct, it is transportation-related funding, and so the money has to be, has to be expended on a transportation project. How that might work, uh, and probably how the, the, the federal government envisioned it, would be that if a private development project, say, were conditioned to widen a roadway, uh, rebuild an intersection, so on, that that, that money could be used towards those transportation improvements. In this particular case, the project that, the ninety-nine unit affordable housing project that we're talking about, uh, applying this money to, there are no significant, uh, transportation improvements required of that project. It's on the corner of Allison and Nuttree, which is already, uh, as you know, improved. So, with the city, um, the solution that the city came up with was to take one point nine million dollars of essentially general fund Measure M money and apply that money directly to the project, um, providing that incentive. Now, if I stopped there, then you would be right. That would be a gift to public funds, and it would be all bad. But we don't stop there. That's one, that's the first step. We take the one point nine million dollars of Measure M, and we apply that to the housing project. Then we accept the one point nine million dollars of SUBHIP, the C Mac SUBHIP money, and that is going to replace the one point nine million dollars of Measure M to construct that roadway rehabilitation project in the next one, two, or three years. Um, and that money is, uh, eligible for that use, and we have, we've had discussions directly, uh, with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, uh, and this project specifically was actually taken to their board, uh, for authorization to do what we are doing with the money. So, um, it, it is, it, what it is, is a creative way for us to still incentivize the housing project, and then we, and use that one point nine million dollars of SUBHIP. It's just because it is transportation money, we had to apply it in a different manner. But at the end of the day, um, the city of Vacaville's whole maintenance of effort is the same, um, with regard to use of the Measure M money. Um, to your question about, um, you, you, you raise a valid point, something that we have dealt with before on fund swaps with other agencies in the county, um, and that is, you know, there is a cost to federalize a project. I would say, though, that on, on a roadway project, relatively small, one point nine million dollars is relatively small for a, a, a grant, federal grant project, um, and, and a roadway project is fairly straightforward. Uh, we're very efficient at turning those projects around, and so the, uh, what, if you had to ask me what the cost is, I'd say somewhere around three, four percent, uh, more by federalizing the project, and that, those costs are in the form of, you know, s- soft costs due to, um, state and federal oversight processes and, and whatnot. So you are correct there, but we decided, you know, it's, the, uh, for the overall good, um, it's, it's a good, it's a good return on the money. So, um, I think those were your three questions. Hopefully that answered them.
Thank you, Sean. Do we have anybody else on the line for, uh, this item?
Caller ending in two seven zero. I'll unmute your mic. Would you like to speak on six B?
Are you calling about six B? Caller? Okay, try the next caller, please.
Caller ending in two two seven. I've unmuted your mic. Would you like to speak on six B?
Uh, no, I'm speaking on six I, if you guys can hear me.
Okay, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna finish six B first, and we'll get back to you, Amber. Thank you. Last caller?
Caller, I have Rochelle Connor and Commodore Saint, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say the whole name. Um, also caller ending in seven six nine. I'll unmute your mic. Are you calling?
I apologize. No, I was calling for item seven.
Okay, we're not just there yet. Thank you. Okay, can you, can you go back to the first caller that didn't identify? Can we try one more time before we close it to public comment?
Um, yeah, hold on one second. I'm gonna ask Rochelle Connor, I'm gonna open your mic. Are you asking to speak about six B or six I? Rochelle Connor, you may need to press star six. Rochelle Connor, you may need to press star six.
Star six to unmute?
I'll go ahead and lower your hand.
Okay, is that all public comment for item six B right now?
Commodore Saint Germain. I'll open your mic if you're calling to talk about six B.
Uh, sorry, I just didn't get a chance to, uh, ask to pull six E and six F.
Uh, I'm sorry, sir, that it's too late. We already moved. Uh, did you wanna talk on six B, sir?
No.
Okay, thank you. I, we have no other public comment?
Hello?
Yes, hello? Did you wanna call on?
Hi, this is... Uh, no.
Okay, we'll get right back to you. Seeing no other comments, I'll, uh, move for motion.
Move approval.
I have Harris and Beatty. Can I have roll call vote?
Councilmember Harris?
Yeah.
Mashburn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beatty?
Aye.
Mayor Rolet?
Aye. Now we'll move to item six I, and if we can open Amber's up.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you now, thank you.
Thank you. Um, this is Amber Robitaille. I'm calling from, uh, as a resident of Brown Street about item six I, um, about the county, or the city-owned property on Brown Street. Um, I just wanted to make a few comments. I'm, I'm excited about the project, um, that's proposed there, but cautiously excited about this item. Um, I'm very happy about the possibility of the Boys and Girls Club moving to Brown Street. We've never had anything on the street for children, literally nothing. Um, this could be such a positive thing for our neighborhood, so I'm so excited about it and want the Boys and Girls Club here. Um, however, on the business end of this, this item is where I have concerns. Um, it seems like a portion of the site will no longer be owned by the city, and the plans include offices, um, a kitchen, other multipurpose rooms, but does not state what they'll be used for. Um, I see no restrictions listed that would, uh, protect our neighborhood, um, that would prevent these spaces from being used for a purpose that would negatively impact the residents. Um, I looked directly, um, across the street from my house, um, at, at this site, uh, literally my entire life, I've seen nothing else besides a field and trees there. Um, so I want to make sure that this project, um, you know, is for the greater good of the neighborhood and won't impact the, you know, negatively impact the residents that, um, in the surrounding area. Um, this is a, is very concerning, as Brown Street has been through a lot recently, um, and the city will have no control over the property if you sell it to someone else. Um, I also do not see anything about community outreach included in this item. I feel that's very important. Um, an architect has been hired to begin creating a site plan and design, um, but they don't know our neighborhood the way the residents that live there do. We have some real challenges on the street, um, and two of which, uh, are traffic and parking issues. Residents can provide you guys with valuable input, and I'm asking that we be included in this process. Um, how the site is laid out is very important. Where the driveways will be placed is critical to the directional flow of the cars and entering, um, and leaving the site is absolutely critical. We have a huge traffic problem on the street. Um, the amount of parking and the landscaping components are critical and important, and I, for one, am volunteering myself to provide input for this project. Like I said, my entire life, I've, I've, uh, looked at a vacant open lot over there with trees and grass. And so, um, I'm, I'm volunteering to help, uh, shape this project, um, into something that is truly, uh, gonna be a great benefit for our neighborhood and not in negatively impact us. So I'm just asking that you guys please, um, include us, the residents, uh, in your plans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other callers?
Revante Robinson. I'll open your mic if you would like to speak on six I.
Yeah, I'm here. Um, so this, this is gonna, uh, surprise some people, but I, uh, a hundred percent agree with what Amber just said. Um, I back up everything that she just said right now. Uh, it's a whole lot of traffic problems over there. Um, it's, it's a dangerous street to drive on. There's also very, very limited parking, and for the amount of people that live there, you know, it's very insufficient, and, you know, I really think that, uh, the community should have more involvement in this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
No hands.
And, uh, Mister City Manager, did you wanna comment on anything that was said?
Certainly. So thank you, uh, to both, uh, the, uh, neighbors for coming out and speaking to this item. So this is just the, the first step and many steps to follow for this process. So tonight's action will give the city council the ability to exclusively talk with the Boys and Girls Club about the future plans and the details. So just about everything that was mentioned, um, by Amber and Revante will be addressed in later phases, um, including public outreach. So it has to go through the entitlement process, um, and then ultimately will come through what's called a disposition and development agreement to address all the details. Um, so everything that was, uh, highlighted tonight will be addressed in subsequent phases. Again, this is just the first part to give us the ability to talk exclusively with the Boys and Girls Club about their project. But no formal actions or decisions on the design, um, and the issues that they raised, um, are being, uh, approved tonight. Those will be discussed as part of future actions.
Thank you, Mister City Manager. Crystal, do we have any other callers?
No additional hands on consent item.
Okay, I will bring it back to the council.
Move approval.
I get a motion. I have Harris and I have Mashburn. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harris?
Yeah.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Mashburn?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Beatty?
Aye.
Mayor Rolet?
Aye. We will move to item seven, business from the floor. This is the time, uh, direct, to address the council with issues that are not on the agenda and that are within the council's subject matter jurisdiction. Do we have anybody on the line tonight?
Caller ending in two seven zero. I'll open your mic.
Hi, my name is Rochelle O'Connor. I am the president of Frederick Southwest Foundation of California, and I wanted to just say thank you for not bowing to the demands of Black Lives Matter in terms of defunding police. Uh, defunding of the police would be very detrimental to all citizens, but particularly high-risk, uh, and at-risk neighborhoods and communities. So I just wanted to say thank you. Please continue your stand, uh, to support our law enforcement and to resist the demands from bullies, the Black Lives Matter organization, that is trying to cause acquiescence by a lot of our elected officials to outrageous demands, and they do not speak for all black people. So I just wanted to call in and say thank you.
Hey, next caller?
I have Julia Ruffin Thomas. I'll open your mic.
Hi, thank you. Um, I have a couple items I wanted to speak on. Uh, one, is there a reason that somebody can't speak after the vote has been made? I understand, you know, time and all that, but, but frankly, it, it doesn't hurt, especially under consent item, to have somebody, let somebody speak, especially since there can be technical errors not letting an item getting pulled. Second, uh, speaking of technical issues, signing onto the Zoom and not really knowing where we're at, 'cause it doesn't show any, uh, item number, it's really confusing, and, uh, is an issue. Third, you guys are talking a lot about elections tonight, and Councilmember Mashburn is not going to be in his seat for the remaining two years of this term. And instead of trying to make ways that the city didn't have to pay for a special election, and, uh, you guys aren't appointing a seat for two years, you are instead allowing this whole opportunity of twenty twenty election to pass by without having a special election for that at-large seat. Uh, so I would like to express my displeasure with that. It's kind of baffling that you guys are unwilling to even take a look at it. Like, you had since March to figure out a legal way to do that. It's now July, and you guys are just like, well, we're gonna appoint the seat for two years and go ahead and let the mayor pick, and the council kind of have a say in it, so, you know, four, six people can have a say. Um, that level of disrespect for democracy is disappointing by all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Linda, did you wanna speak on this item for clarification reasons?
I, I can do that. Um, with respect to the potential vacancy or, or the, um, uh, well, the, the, um, potential vacancy and Councilmember Mashburn's seat, that seat doesn't become vacant until, um, he resigns, and so, um, so there would be no vacancy to fill and, and no action to take until, um, till he actually resigns or takes, uh, the seat that he was elected for. Did, did you want me to talk at all about, you know, District Two? Um, he's, he's not a, he's not in District Two. His seat is an at-large seat, so, um, so moving around or moving up, um, the election for District Two would not impact at all filling up the vacancy of his at-large seat. I don't know if that clarifies, if that answers your question?
Sorry, I was muted again. Um, A, I, I know it's an at-large seat. It's an at-large seat for another two years. That's fine. What I'm saying is, why isn't there an opportunity for Councilmember Mashburn to say, under his resignation with an, a, a date of January, or whatever you guys want? I, I'm saying that there were other options he could have pursued, and the fact that Councilmember Mashburn apparently didn't see the need to do that, and none of the council did, uh, sorry, Councilmember Sullivan, I know you've been feeling a different way, but, uh, that seems out of, out of touch with allowing people to have a say.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other callers?
Revante Robinson. I'll open your mic.
Uh, yeah, me again. So, um, I wasn't even gonna say nothing about this, at this weekend or at this meeting, but, uh, since Lady tried to bring up the defund the police thing... since the lady tried to bring up the defund the police thing. See, what a lot of y'all people don't understand is that the point of defunding the police is the fact that many neighborhoods like mine, communities of color, what cities do, usually they send the police before they send anything else. Before they, they'll send the police to arrest houseless people instead of putting money into resources to make people not be homeless. Instead of, you know, they'll arrest people doing drugs and drug dealers instead of bringing more services for drug treatment. And so that's a big part of defunding the police is taking money from police, which does a lot of harm to our communities and doing things, putting money into things that stop people from doing crime in the first place. And, you know, people keep talking about Black Lives Matter in Vacaville, but the group, the organization, Black Lives Matter, there is no Vacaville chapter. So people keep getting scared about it, but the thing is, these are regular citizens at Vacaville who are speaking up for black people because we don't have people in the council that do that. We have an all-white council and we've had an all-white council for at least 10 years. And on top of that, the lady who called earlier saying that Black Lives Matter doesn't speak for all black people, I couldn't see her, but she definitely sounded white to me. And that's all I'm gonna say for now.
Thank you, Revonte, and thank you for clarifying that. And actually, I will be talking under council comments about the visual town hall meeting that we will be holding on the 16th at 6:30 later on, but that's a good segue for that. Thank you, Revonte. Any other comments under public comment?
Commodore, Saint Germain, I'll open your mic.
Hi, thanks to the mayor, city clerk, and council for responding to some of my messages yesterday. I'm calling to suggest that we change some of the policies regarding empty council seats like Julia mentioned. One of our council members, Mitch Mashburn, is vacating his seat at the same time as the newly-elected 2020 council members will be taking theirs at the end of this year, specifically in District One, Three, Five, and Six. District Two could have been in place of District Six, especially since it was known that Mr. Mashburn was leaving. I understand it costs money to hold a special election, but when an election is already taking place and an appointment is used to fill a vacant seat instead of an election, it takes away the democracy from our Vacaville citizens. And I think when you guys voted in March, it should have went totally different, but I'm hoping in the future this can change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other callers?
There's two additional callers at this time. Sarah Palmizano, I'll open your mic.
Sarah, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Sarah. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm calling to ask Angela and Sarah Commodore as far as the citizens of Vacaville being disenfranchised from choosing their own representation twice now during their mayorship. It is extremely problematic. Is there a reason specifically that we couldn't have it besides the fact that you guys ultimately decided not to? I mean, I understand what she said before about how, you know, the seat won't be vacated. But is that, are we unable to have an election if the seat isn't vacated? Or if Mitch were to resign, let's say in November before the election, could we have the election?
That's a great question. City Attorney?
Yeah, no, at this point, we've missed all deadlines or all deadlines have passed for being able to put that seat on the ballot for November.
And was there a reason that we weren't notified about it at the first meeting where this was discussed, when we asked about it and you guys said you'd get back to us and didn't? I believe you took Julia's email address. We asked for specifically those dates when it would be no longer viable? No?
Linda, did you want to answer that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't recall that, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other callers?
I have two additional callers. Edward Russell, Jr., I will open your mic.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can hear you. Go ahead.
All right. I just got a couple things I just want to touch on real quick. First, I would like to say about the town hall that's scheduled with the police chief on Thursday. I hope there does not softball teed-up questions that you guys already predetermined. I actually hope that you read off some of the questions that come from the community so we can have honest questions and not teed-up, premeditated questions. I really hope that happens, but we'll see. The other thing is, talking real quick just on this whole defund the police, as a black man in this city, I got three children and a wife. All three of my children are educated, drive fancy cars, my wife drives a fancy car, and I could really care less if you spend 80% of the city's budget on police. I don't know how that makes you look as an intellectual that you would have an unbalanced budget like that, but if that's what you want to do, I could really care less. However, I would say this, I would encourage you to keep the police force. Why? Because I'm terrified. Again, I could care less how much you pay them, but if you just hop on Vacavillian on Facebook or just any other Facebook or platform, social media platform, you will see the hostile negativity coming from some non-blacks and the threatening words that they say to encourage violence. And you can see a lot of hatred and bigotry comes from jealousy because they don't have what we have. And so to the mayor specifically, sir, I know, I shouldn't, I respect your status and your financial situation, but these other folks that look to do harm in this community to people of color, blacks, Latinos, Asians, Samoans, Hindus, the jealousy and the anger that they bring towards this community is frightening, to say the least. I fear for myself and my family in this town, and I don't think that any human being should live in fear in a town on top of a town they pay taxes in. And we've been here since 2004, so it's not like we just moved up here. So what I, and then I hear we need solutions instead of just complaining. So I'll stop complaining and provide a solution and then I'll be done. My solution is this, how about every person that's on the council member or on the board and then including the city attorney and the city manager, how about you forfeit your salary and give it to the police to make sure that communities of color are safe? I'll wait. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And I want to assure you that the reason why we're having that meeting is for open discussion. And on our website, the questions that have come in over the last few months have been posted on the website. They're not softball questions, they're a range of questions from everything that we've received and the chief has answered that. But again, on the 16th, the reason why we're doing that is to have, you know, a very direct meeting with all the residents and to listen to what the residents are saying. We want to hear from the residents. So I do appreciate the phone call. Do we have any other calls?
Caller ending in 080, I'll open your mic.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Greer. I'm a citizen here in Solano County in Vacaville. And in regards to public safety, I would also like to be someone who would like to thank you for not defunding our police department. Being a person who has grown up in low-income communities and single mom in a low-income community at one time, I would like to say that I think it's very important that we keep our law enforcement so that we can have proper safety for our citizens. So, you know, they've done a tremendous job in every city in Solano County of helping us to understand, you know, how much human trafficking is happening, especially with our youth, with our foster care system. They've just done a tremendous job of helping with the drugs. And like any occupation, there's always room for growth. And I love the fact that our police chief is, you know, having a town hall with the citizens and taking questions and that you guys are taking leadership on that. You know, as a citizen new to Vacaville in just the last few years, you know, I just, I appreciate seeing the type of discussion and, you know, open table conversation that you are willing to have with the community instead of just kind of brushing it aside and ignoring it. We definitely want to keep our public safety at the top of the list because that's exactly what our citizens need to do. No one should be in fear. And just a little FYI, the Frederick Douglass Organization, the woman that spoke, she has been with that organization for a long time and she is a woman of color and she's just an amazing resource for anybody who would ever want to just learn more about a different perspective from the black community. She's amazing. So, but with that, I just want to again, just thank you guys for not defunding. I do hope that you will continue to work with law enforcement. And also when it comes to these protests that are happening throughout the city, that the police would actually have more of a presence so that, you know, communication and conversation can happen from both sides in a safe environment. I know that I've gone up personally and spoken with organizers who are protesting at the front of City Hall and PD and have had some very peaceful conversations with them, but there have been times when, like I said, there are infiltrators that are violent and, you know, they want to do violence, they want to enact it, when our citizens are trying to be peaceful and trying to protest. And I think we should have more law enforcement presence just to make sure that we do not have anybody getting hurt because we are a great community, all people in Vacaville. And so I just want to thank you guys once again for all that you're doing and for supporting all of our communities and our great law enforcement officers. So, thank you very much.
Hey, Ron, can I ask a question, staff?
And Ron, this is Diana. I want to make a comment as well.
I think we might have some audio visual stuff going on.
Yeah, Councilmember Sullivan, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes. Yeah, I can.
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead. I was gonna, I was gonna wrap up public and bring it back to the council anyway.
Just a quick question, kind of, because the last couple comments have all surfaced around the same topic, but can either Aaron or?
Hello? Can you hear me? I wanted to talk and you, I was one of the first people and you put me on the back thing. Then I have my time to talk, please.
Okay, yes. Actually, Councilmember Sullivan, can we let this gentleman speak first?
Yeah, I'll wait. Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, it was, okay. Look, I'm a resident of the Browns Valley. I'm going to talk about two things, the protests and the coronavirus shutdowns. Unfortunately, we reached a point where the future of our country, of our lives, is at stake and everyone needs to do everything they can to prevent this. Now, you think I'm being extreme, I'm not. Just take a good look at what's happening. It's not just defunding and disbanding the police, it's riots are becoming more dangerous and destructive intentionally, free speech under attack. If we want to avoid like Venezuela, like every communist or fascist country have existed, we absolutely must get involved, do everything we can to prevent this. I'm gonna talk about two subjects again. First, Black Lives Matter, and then we'll get to the virus. Black Lives Matter is not Black Lives Matter. It's a communist movement committed to taking over and controlling everything, our cities, our country, and our lives, eating more racial divide and more black deaths, which is their goal. You doubt that, you doubt it's communist, all you gotta do is enter Black Lives Matter Marxist on YouTube and see their leaders telling you right to their face that they're communist. Their real goal is take over the federal government and when they do, rig all voting so they can never be voted out, create a dictatorship like Venezuela, and with the same result, stealing our assets till nothing is left and another destruction of the country, thousands of people on roadlines. Blocking Trump's reelection is the number one goal these protests and what the exaggerated danger of the virus is all about. It's also the goal of many people that support all this with their silence. This election is not about Donald Trump, it's about our freedom. Here's the truth in the words of a Democratic activist, Hannah Santos. This is a quote, "When Joe Biden and the Democratic Senate House are elected November 3rd, America will no longer exist. We will defund the police and permanently own the streets. We will eliminate the churches and these instructions called rights by getting at least two of our own Supreme Court justices. After Biden wins, we will end the evil known for 25 years as America forever." That's what she said. This is a war against us, okay? Please, please do everything you can. Now, on the protests, I think what you need to do, you're doing a good job basically, but you need to go a step further. Please go on the record that you're instructing the police not only to present any protest, but lawbreaking of any kind will not be tolerated, that the law, police will be told to step in and arrest lawbreakers whenever the law is broken. It's your job to protect the citizens and you gotta do this. You know, we're gonna be watching you. If you're afraid to speak out, you're afraid to say this, go on record, then maybe somebody else should take your place. And I don't want you to. Please, go on record, speak out so they know. You come to Vacaville and A, our police are gonna be present to keep everything peaceful and B, anybody breaks the law, lawbreaking won't be tolerated, okay? Now, the virus, that's the exaggerated danger of the virus. Think about this critical point. The more you test, the more cases you find. Yes?
Sir, your time is up. Thank you very much for your comments. Do we have any other comments from public comment?
I see no hands. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will bring it back to the council. We'll start with Councilmember Sullivan. Go ahead, sir.
So I got two quick questions. The first question, Crystal, it's probably a question for you. There have been past sessions where like a timer was on the screen, so the participants speaking as well as others can see kind of the time countdown. It's not on my screen tonight, so I'm wondering if maybe something changed or maybe if that could be on their next meeting. My second question is a question for staff. If they could, so there are specific instructions on how to get your questions into the forum on Thursday, could staff speak to that specific process so that folks on the line or at home know how to do that?
Mr. City Manager, would you like to take that?
Well, I would, but unfortunately I gave my copy to you for the particulars, but so if you go to our website and check on the city's webpage, City of Vacaville, there is a page right there on the front that addresses our calendar of events and notices. Right there at the top for Thursday the 16th is invitation or a notice for the town hall meeting with the chief of police. And there, if you click on that link, it will take you to instructions on how to, one, participate in the town hall meeting that Thursday, and it also gives you details about how to submit your questions ahead of time. Thank you, Crystal, for pulling that up. If you see on your screen now, this is the page, and you see there, the second paragraph talks about where you can submit your questions. Click on that link. Please provide us your question and we will make sure that that gets directly to the chief and his staff and we will be able to answer that in time on Thursday.
Ron, you might be muted again. Thank you, thank you, Noah. So I wanted to comment on the timer. The timer that we had meetings ago was kind of cheating everyone and so that's why I took it away because the minute she opens the mic, that timer starts. A lot of people, as you see, they don't jump in immediately and I don't want to cut anybody short. We give them three minutes, I want them to have the whole three minutes. So I do have a timer here on my desk. I wait till they start and then I start the timer. Unfortunately, it's not on here, but I wanted to make sure the public had the opportunity to get their full three minutes and not be shorted because of technology not giving them the full three minutes. So that's why we pulled that timer down.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And I believe Councilmember Harris wanted to say a few words?
Yes, I did. Thank you. First, I want to say it's been really great, the last several meetings where we've had more community comment during the, you know, public comment section. And it's very, to me, it's disturbing that, you know, people do not feel safe in our city and as has been commented, everyone should feel safe. If you are a law-abiding citizen, you should be safe in this community. So I'm really looking forward to what will come out of the town hall meeting. I also wanted to address the comments about the filling the vacancies for council seats. I want to correct the record that I did not vote in favor of the current process and that we didn't do our due diligence by, you know, working to find out what it would cost for a special election, especially as it relates to the new districting, which is a much smaller section. to the new districting, which is a much smaller section in order to, you know, actually conduct a special election. So I just want to correct the record that I did not vote vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other council members? Okay, with that, we'll move from item seven and go to 8A. Mr. City Manager, would you like to start us off?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Item 8A is a second reading of an ordinance that's authorizing an amendment to the contract between the city and the CalPERS organization. Jessica Boz, our Director of Human Resources, to make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight is the same presentation and item that was brought to you on June 23rd. Next slide, please, Crystal. Just some comments upfront. Again, there's no change to pension benefits, and there's no impact to the city's current or future liability with this contract amendment with CalPERS. Next slide, please. Some definitions. As a reminder, again, the Public Employees' Pension Reform Act, also referred to as PEPRA of 2013, deems those hired prior to 1-113 as new employee, I'm sorry, as classic employees, and those hired on or after that date are considered new. This act also mandates what the employee share is for those new employees hired after that date, and that mandated cost is 50% of the total normal cost. Total normal cost is the annual cost for the upcoming fiscal year for the active employees. It's also viewed as the long-term contribution rate. This amount is determined by CalPERS through an annual annual evaluation we refer to as actuarial study. Since 2016, the city's 50% of total normal cost has been 6.25% for new employees. Next slide, please. A little bit more background. All city employees pay their portion of pension costs. In 2016, these three groups agreed to pay more toward pension benefits and began cost sharing, meaning picking up a portion of the employer cost. In addition, this is in addition to the employee cost they already pay. Cost share for those classic members hired prior to 1-113 is a simply stated amount. Right now, we do 7% employee plus 1% employer equals 8% total. In order to reach that same 8% for our new employees, it's a bit more complicated in the reason for this contract amendment. It's actually made up of two amounts to equal that 8%. One being that 50% of total normal cost as determined by CalPERS, plus an amount to equal the total of eight. It's currently 6.25 plus 1.75 to equal that 8%. Next slide. CalPERS requires this contract amendment anytime we need to adjust that X in this formula. Next slide, please. Due to the total normal cost changing per our most recent valuation, we need to change that X from 1.75 to 1.25 because the 50% is increasing to 6.75. So the total for the employee will remain at eight. Next slide. Again, there's no change to pension benefits and no impact to the city's current or future liability. Next slide. Our recommendation is that you adopt the subject ordinance. Next slide. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Anybody from the council want to speak before I open it to public comment? Okay, I'll open it to public comment. Crystal, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak?
I do not see anyone from the public with history. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring it back to the council.
Remove approval.
I have Harris moved it.
Second.
Baby second. Can I have roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harris? Yes. Mashburn?
Hi.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Baby?
Hi.
Mayor Rolet?
Hi. Thank you very much. We'll move to item 8B. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm going to read the title.
Oh, I appreciate that. I'm sorry for jumping over that. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Ordinance authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City of Vacaville and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System to amend current Section 20516, employees sharing additional cost amounts for all new local miscellaneous members in the Vacaville Managers Association, Unrepresented Administrative Managers Group, and Unrepresented Department Heads.
Thank you, Mrs. City Clerk. We'll move to item 8B. Mr. City Manager, would you like to start us off?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So item 8B is a resolution of the City Council, adding a ballot measure to the November 3rd, 2020 general municipal election regarding the imposition of a proposed cannabis business tax. I will turn it over to Christina Love and David Nann, who will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is Christina Love. David is here is is also online as well. But most of this will actually be presented to you by our consultant. So before I get into that, just a couple of things to kind of review. We're here before you again, although this time in a virtual manner, with more information related to cannabis in Vacaville. At our last presentation, we spoke about the status of cannabis in other cities within Slano County and a few other close by that are similar jurisdictions to Vacaville. We also discussed possible options for cannabis in Vacaville and thought direction as to what council may feel it would be a good fit. However, at the time, there were still a lot of unanswered questions and some concerns and reservations that council had about cannabis operations and businesses in Vacaville and the potential impacts to general health and safety of our residents. So with that, what was one of the major concerns or questions that really came about was the possibility of a cannabis tax. And as you may be familiar, in order to do a citywide tax, it does require a ballot measure for a citywide vote. So today, we are here, this evening, we're here to present a citywide tax measure for the 2020 November ballot. Just a quick point of clarification on that. The passing of any such cannabis tax on the ballot does not approve or make legal any cannabis activities that are in violation of our current prohibition ordinance. To move forward with a cannabis operation in Vacaville, it would require a municipal code amendment that we would, if so, if so desired, council could direct staff to move with at a later time. But for tonight's cannabis tax policy, I have David McPherson, who is the representative from HDL Companies, here to explain to you what this tax policy and this tax measure says. He and his company are statewide. They've been working with various jurisdictions on cannabis regulations and cannabis taxes. So they are very much the professionals that we have been using to help guide us in this process. So with that, I will hand the floor over to David McPherson.
Thank you. And I just want to make sure everyone could hear me okay. If we could move to the next slide?
Yes, David, go ahead. I'm sorry. We can hear you.
Thank you. We can go to the next slide. So, Mayor, Mayor and City Council, thank you for the opportunity for me to speak with you tonight. And I think staff did a good job of just kind of conveying the status of everything. And so really, what we want to talk about tonight in this tax is is the emphasis that regardless of you move forward of doing anything or you stay status quo, is that this is really to be strategic on on putting a cannabis tax out there. So you won't be, you know, citizen initiatives don't come at you. You've already saw where the states try to change regulations and things of that nature. So the focus is really is to just be flexible and nimble on some of the things that we're going to talk about. So the revenue strategy approach and the future trends and just the oversight. So the next slide, please. Next slide. There we go. So again, being proactive, the goal is to kind of address different things, and that is the adult use, medicinal use, which is starting to blend into being one and the same to some degree, and to address illegal activity, because it's it's like I call the Al Capone rule. It's where you don't get people for doing illegal activities or trying to shut them administratively through land use and other stuff. But having a tax on the books gives you flexibility to take action against them through an assessment of of not paying taxes. And as I mentioned, legislative changes, we're starting to see a lot of stuff relating to different functions of the business, products of the business, that if they occur, that you have that flexibility to be nimble with whatever policies either today or down the road may occur with this, even in your status quo of a ban. And then as as you guys are a big player in even the lawsuit against the delivery component, just just being in a position to tax delivery services that come into town, even if you stay status quo, and we'll go in a little more detail with that, and address future trends that I have a slide specifically on. So part of the goal of that, too, is that, you know, it's not just about taxing. It's about being collaborative. Any any successful task, any balance, even a regular business tax, is being collaborative regarding planning that fine sweet spot, balance point for a tax that's equitable for solutions, not only for the cities but the businesses, so that should you do decide to do something, that the goal would be to have them sustainable, but also to make sure they can be competitive. Next slide. So we are experiencing great changes in future trends. And so things that we have put in this in the tax ordinance, the detail really is to address all these types of things, dealing with technology platforms, kiosks, things that have changed, as you saw, as we saw with the dot com did the list when we looked at sales tax almost 15, 20 years ago. And there's starting to be more involvement in hemp regulations, that hemp is going to potentially be allowed in cannabis stores. We're seeing CBD stores popping up all over the place. So if you want to have some kind of oversight to them, to prohibit them or to have some combination of flexibility dealing with any combination of those, that this ordinance will address that as well, as long as other other potential things related to, again, the vaping regulations and manufacturing production. And then because COVID has really changed business models, at least in the short term, and how that influences, this gives you that flexibility to look at the consumer behavior might change related to deliveries or any type of businesses that that you may consider in the future if you do at all. Next slide. So as I mentioned to you, one of the things that is coming in is quietly is that hemp is no longer a controlled substance. And so as part of that, we've seen bills pop up that were going to allow hemp to be put in facilities or sold in other stores. And so what we tried to really address in this ordinance as well is giving you flexibility. The intent here is not to look at businesses like a Costco or GNC or Walgreens or CVS that really does a de minimis amount of selling of any type of hemp product, but really about businesses that make that their primary business and have other issues regarding packaging or manufacturing or cultivation, things of that nature, that this gives you some opportunity to have some strategic positioning and address that should you wish to do that or exempt it altogether in the ordinance as far as accepting it to a tax. So that's the point I wanted to make out of this. Next slide, please. So the proposed ordinance is pretty standard on a lot of part, like any tax. It it gives you the authority to do things. It creates definitions specifically for things that you want to specifically define so that you are addressing them as a tax itself. So it's very clear and defined. It is the tax rates in there, and we give you flexibility in how you can make modifications into that tax imposed in here. Should you wish to have a lower tax for medicinal versus adult use, you could do that if you want to have different activity, reduction or increases to up to where the voters permit. You have that ability as a council to make make that and have those options to you. And you might hear from others that might say, well, the taxes are too high. We try to find that sweet spot of what is the really top of the point of what we're what we want you to tax that and the rates that were back in 2016 or 14 or 16 and even some in 18, at those high tax rates are no longer in today's market, and we'll go in a little detail about that. And then I wanted to share with you the Section 260 at the bottom here, relief, you know, we really wanted to to be mindful of businesses that, you know, as we saw in Sonoma where businesses burned down and they weren't able to pay their taxes or that they had restrictions on being able to pay their taxes. And in this environment with the COVID situation, these unforeseen circumstances, we've written the disaster relief language in there to give you some flexibility to address those things. And then you, as a council, the most important thing is is the ability to amend and modify anything in the language, address, again, the taxes lower or increase them up to the rate that the voters would approve and make modifications to things that are necessary. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, the rates rates of the tax should be high enough to generate revenues because that's maybe a goal of this should you you decide to move forward with it. But low enough to avoid overtaxing, as I mentioned, insurability. I mean, look at your neighbors of what they're doing and and having businesses that, again, are sustainable and competitive is very critical, especially on the non-retail where they're competing up and down for cultivation or manufacturing or distribution. Having those rates that move with time would be important. And again, just seeing how your neighboring neighboring cities are competing so that you're not losing out to businesses moving in and out of them. And then finding some balance in there. Once you kind of get to a certain point, you know, having a freeze on it so businesses can stabilize, normalize, figure out what their business models are doing are going to be critical in keeping a tax low enough to allow them to do that. And then it gives you an opportunity to assess things after a period of time to see how successful, how much they're struggling and they're not going up and down. And then addressing market conditions, as I mentioned, there's some index inflation for for some of the activities. There's some minimum rates that you can attach in there. And then just making sure that you that you're able to tax all the activities that we can potentially think of, things that we ran into in the last few years, or things that are legislatively looked at there as potential markets. Next slide. So the rates you see here are, again, are the top of the cap. These are the the highest scenarios that we're looking at. And the reason these rates have been modified again over, there's 100, about 124, 126 cities up to the 2020 election coming up, that have had some form of a tax measure. I was fortunate to draft about 74 of those things, and we try to make them flexible and nimble. But also, rates are coming down. And so these these rates that we provided you are really at that last endpoint of what is acceptable. You might say that, well, you know, some of these rates day we see our neighbors have a 10% tax or an 8% tax or whatever. And those are because they came in earlier in time. And as this energy becomes normalized and we're competitive and is struggling with with the illegal market, having rates that can make them a successful but also not impact the consumers that are going to look to go to the illegal activity becomes critical on how you set those rates. Next slide. So the the goal of this slide, which I wanted to share with you, is that we found in the business models, is that it's really looking at what the the total cumulative tax rate would be for all businesses that could be in any one one city from a vertical standpoint. And the goal we find is that if you leave it under 30%, it's a lot like the alcohol model, is trying to set rates on the taxes, is that if you can keep it under 30%, that that's that's the optimal situation that you want to be on. And so by having that rate, and you can see where we've highlighted in rate, you will see the rates that we've kind of showing here is that what are the recommended rates, not your your cap rates, which we showed you on the proposed, you know, maximum cap rates. But if you use these as examples, and for this purpose, as we use 2.5% for cultivation, but we use 10% square footed converted over to kind of reflect this. But these are the rates you can see of how you keep under there. And so some of the rates that you see here on the recommended rates for the wholesale ones are those rates that we recommend that you look at for setting rates at the initial or somewhere there about. And and we use that range in the retail between 4% and 6%. But you can see at 5%, I showed you at 5%, so that you could see even if you went to the 6%, you're going to pop over that 30%, just slightly, but you would you would pop over that 30%. So what that reflects of why you don't look at 7%, 8%, 9%, 10% for for any one activity, but especially for retail. The next slide. So the next steps are, we're at the end of here. We got a deadline coming up for August. So the goal would be to approve the ordinance. Should you have any suggestions, we update that before it gets any, you provide final direction if there's any anything that you're you wish to address. And then adopt the resolution tonight or the next the next meeting, depending on if there's any modifications. And then it goes to the tax vote, tax, it goes to the election in November 3rd. And then it gives you a little flexibility to finalize the ordinance and develop any forms, procedures, staff would need-- And then it gives you a little flexibility to finalize the ordinance and develop any forms, procedures staff would need to do. Again, even if you abandoned, if you even said a status quo and want to lease approach. Being able to tax the deliveries come in town, then it would go into effect January 1st of 2021. Next slide. And at this time, more happy to answer any questions or turn it over to staff.
Okay, I'll open it up to the council. Anybody from the council want to start off before I open it up to the public?
Sure, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, good Dylan. Okay. We'll go, we'll start with, I don't know who jumped in first, but we'll start with council member Harris.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for the report. I, I did have a couple of questions. And they might seem minor, but I'm looking at what the verbiage is that would go to the voters. And it doesn't seem to coincide, at least the amount which is expected to be generated. Doesn't coincide with what the staff report says. Staff report says somewhere between 237,000 and 367,000 annually. And this says between 400 and 600. So I'm wondering why there's a discrepancy there, number one. The other thing is, I'm, you know, because we have a current prohibition on cannabis business. In Vacaville, should there be something of that nature stated in this? I mean, because, because really, I think this is really about deliveries coming into the city. I think that's where the whole discussion. Really, you know, was generated from, from that. And so my question is, what, what? And maybe I, I have, I'm not looking at the computer screen right now, but what's the projected? Revenue from deliveries that come from outside our city into Vacaville? And then. I had one more thing here, let me look. You mentioned hemp being treated differently than cannabis. And so are, are you saying hemp is, is no longer, I think you used the word controlled substance? And so it is. Legal to operate that anywhere? I didn't understand that.
Sure.
If you can answer those.
Sure, I will address your first question. So to the voters, the question could be modified, say if the city permits. Some, some minor tweak into the actual 65 question that I can let council respond to as well. But the, the figures that we have, I, I don't know if there's two different documents. The figure 237 to 67 is assuming that you would have on a range to three to four businesses in town. That would show the low end of the tax to the high end of the tax, there were four businesses. So if you actually move forward with that, that would be the potential for what the, the revenue would be for that. But you asked a question also specifically on if we only had deliveries. And there's probably 10 to 12 deliveries being conducted in yours, just within Dixon, Vallejo, Fairfield, Sonoma, Davis. Rio Vista. And some of the other cities that might border that can go within 50 to 75 miles and do deliveries to you. And you can have, I'm sorry, Artenas and Benicia as well that might occur there. You're probably looking at about 10 to 12 delivery services that might produce about 50,000 each in there. So that low end 237 would probably be close in there that potentially could capture that.
Okay, and then before you finish, that, that brings to mind that. How do you actually track and trace and make sure that you get paid? On those sales taxes for those deliveries? I mean, it's a self-reporting thing, right? You're relying on the delivery companies to self-report that they delivered to your city?
So there's, there's two things, depending on, you know, the direction of moving forward. You can draft a regulatory ordinance that only delivers, addresses deliveries coming into town. Where you can have certain requirements for them. State law doesn't prohibit you from regulating, it just prohibits you from prohibiting them. So it's typically, you know, a very short three-page application form with like a $200 fee that they have to record it. And then they're mandated to, to, to have that permit and even come into the city. And then that's how you would be able to track and ensure that they're paying their taxes for those deliveries.
Okay, so, so again, it's based on self-reporting, basically.
Part of it would be, some would be enforcement or other businesses, you know, that are, that are trying to comply. Probably going to let the city know. Who is not complying and also putting them on notice as well.
Okay, okay. And then can you answer the question because I wasn't, I wasn't clear on that.
Sure, more than happy to. So kind of what I was trying to allude to was is that current cannabis businesses are not permitted to sell hemp in their business operations. However, if regulations change, I'm sorry. If legislation continues being aggressive as it has been, it actually put one out there before. A bill is that it's going to permit cannabis or hemp. CBD. To be sold in cannabis stores. So if they're delivering any combination of that into your city, or if you happen to permit businesses. That the goal would be is that you do not want to lose, lose that opportunity to, to capture that revenue. The other part is more from an enforcement standpoint. We have certain cities, in fact, one is, is closer to, I'd say Elk Grove. Had a huge bunch of CBD stores pop up. And because it's not a controlled substance, they had a difficult time shutting them down. And having an appropriate tax that you want to address it that way would be one way to enforce that. Or reduce or have oversight control over it versus them.
Got it.
You fighting them, unlike you with the compassionate use, collect, collectives that you had in the old days.
Got it, okay. Thank you so much for all those explanations, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Sullivan, were you next or Mashburn, I'm sorry?
I, I can go now or Mashburn can go, I don't mind.
Oh, go ahead Sullivan.
So two quick questions and actually council member Harris asked pretty much the same questions I wanted to ask. So you said 10 to 12 delivery sites from outside Vacaville currently operating in the city. And you said 50,000, is that in total or 50,000 for each of those storefronts?
Well, assuming that it was out of town deliveries to respond to her 50,000 for each of the delivery operations. Each retailer that's probably from out of town coming into town. Would be generating about $50,000 in gross revenue that you would tax. That would give you. The calculation would probably be estimated around that, the total revenue that they'd all make. Would project probably in that low 200,000 range.
Okay. Okay. So, and, okay, I think, well, if there's 10 to 12 of them and you're saying 50,000 each, why wouldn't that be closer to half a million? Or, or does it just, does it scale up in a weird way?
Well, they, you may have one business that's using multiple vehicles that are going into the city, not necessarily different businesses.
Okay, gotcha. And then my second question, the permit process, you, you talked about how that's not part of tonight, that would come later? Or when would that discussion happen or not happen?
That, you know, after the election, that's where you may circle back to have a policy discussion on regulations. Of, you know, what level you want to be at. Are you going to allow something in the city? And, and the answer is no, but we want to regulate just out of town deliveries.
Right.
Then that's where that policy discussion would occur.
Okay, but that's not relevant until the tax passes or if the tax.
Not tonight, no, it's not.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's all my questions.
Mashburn, did you have any questions before I opened it up to the public?
I don't have any more that haven't already been asked, thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Mayor, may I clarify one more thing?
Absolutely, go ahead.
So what, so another question that came up, and I know we, we talked about it. In the past is the apportionment, I think just clarifying the delivery. So, for example, if a business in Dixon, a retailer sells $2 million. A year in sales and they do $200,000 in sales in Vacaville. Then the proceeds or the sales that they do in Vacaville. Would be the revenues, the revenues that they would pay the tax on. And there's confusion that people think that, oh, well, now you're double taxing them because now they're paying. They're paying the same amount of tax to the city of Dixon. And that's not correct. They get to deduct those gross receipts from wherever those other cities are. And that's called apportionment law so that they're just paying that percentage to the city for where the actual sales occur. So it's not a double taxation. And I know that has come up in the past and I just wanted to make sure you were clear as a council of how that works.
Can I, can I ask a question on that? Cause actually I'm kind of confused on that. So just as a really simple example, let's say Dixon has a 5% tax and Vacaville has a 5% tax. Would the end user be charged a 10% tax? Or what you're saying is the Dixon tax in that sense is waived and they only pay the 5%, correct?
Correct, they get to deduct, again, if they sold $200,000 in Vacaville of their 2 million, they would get to deduct that $200,000. And only report on 1.8 million in their taxes to Dixon.
Got you, okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm going to open it up to the floor. Do we have any callers?
Troy Lawrence, Troy Lawrence, I'll open your mic.
Good evening, can I be heard?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you very much, I want to appreciate y'all bringing it up. It seems a little bit overwhelming because now it seems like everything's being added. And the first subject that is being brought up is obviously taxes and delivery of taxes is a question I have too. With that double tax, because I don't understand if the November taxes pass. You know, and the process, my thing is, I obviously don't want to get double taxed. The time I waited for this process to happen, to open my business to help the citizens of Vacaville. I've waited over five years and here we go. And there's nothing been established, nothing more than a, which, let me say the term properly. Prohibition, prohibition ordinance. Which is something I, I thought I'd never hear again, especially in the state of California. Especially after the voters have spoken and it seems this vote has just been circumvented. While other cities seem to be getting the tax and now that we don't seem to be getting the tax. Now it seems to be an issue. Now it seems to be an issue now that other people are coming in here, helping the citizens and you're not, and we're not getting the tax. Because in five years, we've established none. I tried to work with the previous administration, the previous mayor, and nothing has happened. So I thank you very much for stepping up with HDL. And my question really goes to the double tax because I'm trying to get an established out of city so that I can help the city, citizens. But I don't want to be tough double taxed. You pass a tax, but you don't actually license the businesses. That's the problem. It'll be circumvented again. I feel that, yeah, you can get your tax ordinance and start getting your tax from your out of town deliveries. But then the citizens of Vacaville are sitting here waiting for you to license. So we're waiting for a time period of, you know, you pass it in November, HDL comes in and creates your process at the beginning of the year. That would drag for six months, I feel. The process itself will be another four to six months, then the state licenses. Everything in cannabis is slow, but realistically you have a licensed businesses in Vacaville. In late 2021 or early 2022, unless you get started on a process before the November election. Meanwhile, people like me, Troy, hopes to operate out of Sacramento and in Vacaville for that time period while applying for the new license. And can we get staff to propose an apportionment plan? And that, that the town delivery, that if an out of town delivery can show that they have a business license in another city. That they only need to pay half the Vacaville tax? Cause I feel the taxes are way too high. They're not in accordance with the other cities around us from Sacramento to Santa Rosa. It's at 2%, y'all went 5%, you went 10%. I think y'all went the max. It's a, it's a COVID pandemic, but the businesses are not getting any, any sort of assistance from the cities or the states. Other than, you know, the federal government.
Okay, sir, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I thank you for your time.
Yes, sir, thank you. Next caller?
I see no other callers wishing to keep on this item.
Okay, I'll close public comment and I'll entertain motion.
I will move it.
I got Beatty moved it and I believe it was Sullivan that seconded it. Can we have roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harris? Do I get to ask for clarification on this?
Oh, absolutely. I apologize, go, go ahead.
That's okay, I, I mentioned the fact that we already have a ordinance prohibiting cannabis businesses. So can there be something added up here that says if the city of Vacaville? You know, because it, it, deliveries is one thing, but all these other businesses are, are not approved. We can't, we can't say no to deliveries. So, I mean, that's just something we need to deal with. But I wanted to know if there could be a clarifying, you know, sentence or word or something up there. Otherwise I can say yes.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, did you want to clarify?
Yes, sir, I'm looking at the resolution to see if we have an opportunity to add anything in there that can specify. Councilmember Harris's concerns. I think we can add something in there that says that this does not. Allow any approval and such allowances would require further counsel or subsequent counsel action.
With that, then I would like to have Beatty amend his motion to include that.
Oh, amended.
So amended and then seconded from.
I'm good, that's fine.
Okay, and, and so now we'll roll call vote with the amendment.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bashburn?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Beatty?
Aye.
Mayor Rowlett?
Aye. And then I'm going to ask the city attorney, are you good with the clarification and the amendment?
So, so the way I understand it, the. That language would be added to the recitals of the resolution that's adding this measure to the ballot. So if that's correct, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay, Harris, okay, perfect. Then we're going to move to item 9A. Mr. City Manager, would you start it off, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a resolution ratifying the June 24th, 2020 order of the Director of Emergency Services. Regarding the city's outdoor dining program. Tim Patton, our Economic Development Manager will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. Tonight, staff is seeking council approval on a resolution to ratify the June 24th order of the Director of Emergency Services. Our city manager of the city of Vacaville regarding outdoor dining options on the public wideaway. And temporarily suspending parking requirements to allow for privately owned parking lots, courtyards and other open spaces. To be used for restaurant dining. If you go to the next slide, Crystal? Outdoor dining program overview, so the, the new name of the outdoor dining program is Vacaville Al Fresco. It's kind of in line with a lot of other jurisdictions in California, using the Al Fresco theme. On June 9th, 2020, the city council of Vacaville, city of Vacaville adopted resolution number 2020. 062 adding, I'm sorry, adopting a temporary outdoor dining program in response to the impacts of COVID-19. Additionally, on June 23rd, 2020, the city council of the city of Vacaville authorized the city manager. Of the city of Vacaville to finalize and implement a comprehensive temporary outdoor dining program. In accordance with the city council's June 9th and June 23rd directive. City manager acting in his capacity as Director of Emergency Services. Executed an order implementing a comprehensive temporary outdoor dining program on June 24th, 2020. This order authorizes restaurants that receive a city issued permit to utilize pre-designated outdoor. Spaces in order to effectively operate the restaurant while complying with state and local health orders. Including but not limited to, limited to social distancing requirements. Our outreach efforts with Al Fresco has been pretty extensive. We've worked closely with the downtown Vacaville Business Improvement District. And the Chamber of Commerce to notify businesses through their memberships. We also will be doing an email blast using a software program called Constant Contact. That will inform not only all restaurants, but also all businesses throughout Vacaville of this program. And then we've also implemented a city website that focuses exclusively on the outdoor dining program. Where people can kind of come to the website for one-stop shopping and includes the application. All the terms and conditions associated with the, the program. And everything that's, from a regulatory standpoint, what, everything a restaurant would need. The duration of the program is until December 31st. Of course, city council has the option to extend that if it's warranted. Uh, the fiscal impact is, is very modest. We've allocated a budget of $8,000 to, uh, this program. That's primarily, that's money that's primarily used for the setup of, uh, K-Rail, uh, particularly on Merchant Street, I'm sorry, Main Street. Uh, you might've seen La Vergata's, uh, uh, K-Rail that was placed on, on Friday of last week. It, uh, secluded four parking spaces for outdoor dining and it's been used quite extensively over the last few days. We'll go to the next slide, Crystal? So just an update on the program, uh, we've received eight applications, uh, and all eight restaurants were approved and are participating in the program. Uh, La Vergata, as I just mentioned, had K-Rail placed on Main Street last week. Um, you know, it's been used quite a bit in the last few days. Merchant Street closure, um, initially we had some establishments along, uh, the portion of Merchant Street between Main and Dobbins that were interested in closing off Merchant Street on the weekends. Uh, we've had two or three businesses kind of, uh, renege on that and kind of, uh, changed their minds. So we're in a kind of a wait and see approach to see if we're going to close Merchant Street, uh, in the future. It could still very well happen, but, um, at this time, the businesses on that porch, portion of Main or Merchant Street do not feel the need to close the, the street. Um, but certainly we can close the street if it's warranted moving forward. Uh, general observations of the, uh, the program so far, it's been highly, um, received by not only the patrons of, of restaurants, but of course, obviously the restaurant owners. Um, and as we market this program and continue to market this program, we expect, um, many more restaurants to partake in this, in this program. Uh, next slide, Crystal? So kind of two, two prime examples of the outdoor seating in Vacaville. We have, uh, La Vergata on the left-hand side. You can see the, uh, the tables and the individuals and the parking spaces, uh, sitting outside, um, just casually eating dinner or lunch and enjoying the weather and having, you know, plenty of shade through awnings and, and umbrellas. Um, like I said, every, every time I've gone past there, it's been pretty, uh, crowded and busy and we hope that we can get more, uh, restaurants on Main Street to, to take part in this. And then on the right-hand side, uh, we have Los Reyes in the town square. Again, a very popular place for, for, uh, outdoor dining at this time. Uh, next slide, please, Crystal? The recommendation this evening is by simple motion, adopt the resolution to ratify the June 24th, 2020 order of the Director of Emergency Services, our City Manager of the City of Vacaville regarding outdoor dining options of the public right of way, on-street parking and temporarily suspend parking requirements to allow for privately owned parking lots, courtyards and other open spaces to be used for restaurant dining. At this point, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation and, and I don't want to slow down anything tonight, but, um, I would like to either ask you or the City Manager, is there any way that we can, you know, now that Gavin's done what he's done to us again, which I was very happy with, um, is there any way we can open this up to other businesses? Can we make it bigger and wider and better, uh, to get us through at least this summer? Um, is there ways that we can, uh, start including other businesses downtown and, and, you know, maybe get the air salon? I, I, I'm just throwing this out here. Uh, Mr. City Manager, do you have any input on that?
Uh, yes, that is something, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is something that we discussed with our team today, um, in full detail, given the governor's orders and, um, the Placer County, or excuse me, the Salerno County, uh, Health Officers orders as well. Um, if it's okay with you, um, we do have some ideas that we'd like to share with the council under item, uh, under the final item on our COVID update at the end of the agenda, if that's all right, item.
Yeah, I don't want to mess this one up at all. Um, but I want to actually explore trying to do more. So I do appreciate that. I'll, I'll strike that for my comment and we can bring it up, I guess, under 90, but it's something that I would like to look at and I, I'm, again, I want to make sure that we're moving forward and doing everything with this one, but it's something that I think it's important to all the businesses in the City of Vacaville.
We do have a plan that I can share with you.
Great. I appreciate it. Any other council comments before I open up the floor? Seeing none. Are there any comments from the floor?
I see no hands from the floor.
Okay. I'll bring it back for motion.
I'll move approval.
I have Mashburn for, and Harris as a second. Can we have roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harris?
Yeah.
Mashburn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beatty?
Aye.
Mayor Rolet?
Aye. And, and thank you again, Tim, for that presentation. I do appreciate it and I, I think it's going to work out nicely for our businesses. 9B, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, this is a proposal for a substantial amendment to our Community Development Block Grant 2025 Consolidated Plan and a amendment to our annual action plan for this year to include a small business loan program and a, um, senior hot meals program allocation. Once again, our Economic Development Manager, Tim Patton, will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Uh, good evening again, uh, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight I'd like to discuss and present the Small Business Assistance and Senior Meals Program. Uh, tonight I will go over the, kind of the backgrounds of how we got here, uh, the program overview, policy considerations and our recommendation this evening. If we could go to, uh, two more slides, Crystal? So the small business program and senior meal program background, um, as you know, this all kind of started back in March with, uh, the closures of many, uh, retail food establishments, the shelter at home, uh, that order that came down back in March, I believe March, uh, 18th or 19th. Uh, the government has instituted measures to limit the spread of COVID, but as a result, a lot of businesses, particularly small businesses, have really, really suffered. Um, as businesses continue to suffer through forced closures and eventual uncertain transitional phases, many will need capital to pay for rent, insurance and other fixed expenses. Uh, the Small Business Administration states that the average business has 15 days of cash flow in reserve. Closures in California exceeded 50 days before some non-essential services were allowed to operate in a limited form. Many companies that have business interruption insurance are also being informed that their policies do not cover a pandemic and therefore their losses are not covered. And obviously yesterday's news from the state and the governor's office as far as additional closures and, uh, elimination of indoor dining in 30 counties has put us, uh, further strain on our small businesses. Uh, going back to May 12th of this year, uh, staff presented to council possible financial assistance programs for local businesses during COVID-19. Some of the programs included a shop at Ford and grocery delivery program. Council directed staff to return to a future council meeting with information on the number of small businesses that could potentially be part of a small business loan or grant program. Uh, two weeks later, on May 26th, information was provided to council on staff's efforts to develop a small business loan and/or grant program. Staff recommended using community development block grant funds to establish a small business assistance program. This program would utilize approximately $300,000 to $450,000 of CBPG funds. Staff also presented using $12,600 of CBPG funds to extend and expand the city's, uh, very successful senior hot meals program. And at that meeting, four options were provided to council for consideration. And then on June 12th, uh, June 9th of this year, uh, at the June 9th City Council meeting, staff provided detailed requirements to use CBPG funds for a small business assistance program. Based on the data and information obtained, staff recommended several options for council's consideration for use of CBPG funds for small business assistance. If we can go to the next slide, please, Crystal? So the feedback that was received back on June 9th, um, if you just look at the different categories, you know, the form, form of funding, uh, at the June 9th meeting, uh, council seemed fairly receptive to a loan program for a term of six month deferral, uh, in a five-year, uh, payback period. Interest rate, uh, was a modest 2.5%. That was based largely on what other cities, um, have provided in terms of interest rates for, uh, small business assistance loans, but also what the SBA is offering in terms of their, um, interest rates. So the 2.5% is actually less than what, uh, the Small Business Administration offers in terms of their interest rate. Uh, a low amount of up to 15,000 was talked about and targeted businesses included businesses in both stage two and three. And towards eligibility, a key requirement was that a business, um, was, that would not be eligible had they received, uh, SBA loans in the past, either through the PPP or the EIDL program. The next slide, Crystal? Some of the key eligibility, eligibility requirements, um, discussed, uh, include businesses must be located within the city limits. All businesses or sole proprietorships must adhere to the CBPG criteria for low moderate income jobs. Business must have an active business license. All businesses must have $25,000 or less in cash available at the time of the application for a small business loan program. Applicant is at least 51% majority owner, business owner, and the owner of business is current with property taxes and city fees. Next slide, Crystal? So the three kind of policy, key policy questions this evening. Will the City Council agree and authorize to use CBPG funds for a small business assistance program and senior hot meals program? Maybe the, the, the most important question of the night, will the City Council consider staff to execute a forgivable loan or a grant program provided that a business retains low moderate income jobs for a period of six months? And finally, will the City Council authorize $440,000 using both CBPG one-time CARES Act COVID grant funds and annual CBPG funds for a small business loan or grant program and the senior hot meals program? And I think an important note is roughly 80% of the $440,000 is part of this, uh, recommendation comes from the one-time CBPG, uh, CARES Act COVID money. Next slide, Crystal? So the recommendation, uh, recommendation this evening, um, is by simple, or provide direction on CBPG small business loan program repayment. Uh, second, by simple notion, adopt a substantial amendment to the Community Development Block Grant, uh, five-year plan of 2020 through 2025 Consolidated Plan and Program Year 2020-21 Annual Action Plan to include a small business loan program and senior meal program allocation. And finally authorize the City Manager or his designated to make minor modifications to the small business loan program if needed to respond to local business needs. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions if I have.
Thank you very much again for the presentation. Before I open it up to public comment, would anyone from the council like to speak on this item?
I have one question.
Okay. Councilmember Sullivan, go ahead, sir.
Hey, Tim, can you go back to, I want to say it was slide five? Uh, okay, yes. So the last point there, the owner of the business is current with property taxes and city fees. I, I mean, I agree with that in concept, but there've been a couple of discussions about us waiving fees and about, you know, in situations where maybe a restaurant had to pay, you know, 10, 20, 30, $40,000 for a sewer connection fee or something that, and then the bottom dropped out in March. Um, there are some circumstances where an owner of business may not be current on, on fees or property taxes that are, that are COVID related. So I guess my only request is can we make that like roll back to last tax year or something? I, I, I wouldn't want to penalize anyone because of some sort of technical loophole over the last three or four months. Um, so I'm wondering if, I think they should be current in general, but I can also understand if folks are having fee issues or property tax issues over the last few months. Um, so my request, I love the rest of the presentation. My request would be put some sort of caveat that talks about maybe last tax year instead of this tax year or, or something. So there's not like a, a hold harmless or there is a hold harmless period for the COVID piece. That's my.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Um, I think we also would offer the opportunity for a, uh, uh, a payment plan to, for, for any business that's perhaps, uh, behind on property taxes or city fees as an option as well.
That's great. I just would hate to penalize a business and, you know, the bottom fell out, they weren't making any revenue and they couldn't pay their taxes or fees. And now we're saying, you also can't have a loan. Um, but I, I get the, the spirit of the statement.
Councilmember Sullivan, I, I do appreciate that and I think I would echo your thoughts. Um, if, you know, if they've gone, you know, obviously if we've helped them out with, you know, any taxes or anything, uh, they would still be in good standing, but if something should have happened or you, you gave a great example, if they jumped in right before March, opened up and then they owe, you know, for hookup fees, I would like to look at that. I think I would like, if we could, and I'll, I'll lean on the city attorney for this, if we could say, you know, we're not going to go back a year and people are, but I, I would say, look at case by case basis and, um, you know, give maybe the City Manager the authority to say, okay, that makes sense. This person was, you know, uh, just starting the business and they had sewer hookup fees or water hookup fees. I, I would like to give that latitude probably to the City Manager if, if that's, if that's something we could do tonight. Uh, and I'm going to lean on the city attorney.
And Ron, I have a question too.
Sure.
So, so Mayor, I think slide seven might have addressed, um, that issue. If we can go to slide seven for a moment?
Okay, that, and, and that's all I want to make sure that is if we go into a motion, uh, just give the City Manager, I, I don't want to open it up. I know, uh, no one's thinking the same way I'm thinking is we, we don't want to penalize anyone that's trying to do the right thing, but I don't want to just open it up and say anybody in the last year. I'd rather have the City Manager look, uh, you know, business by business and say, okay, that one makes sense. They were doing their due diligence, but just got caught up or, no, somebody was blatantly last year not doing something and now they want, uh, a part of this money. Uh, I am going to go on and say, um, uh, you know, I have said in the past that I wanted to do a loan with this program. I'm gonna, I'm gonna swap that. Uh, I've seen, uh, too many businesses up to this point and then we opened it up, uh, the governor had opened it up, um, and then he slammed it back shut again. And I don't know where the end is in sight. So I'm going to advocate tonight to, uh, do the grant as opposed to the loan and give these businesses an opportunity to save their business before, uh, Newsom decides to let us go back to business. So, um, I'm going to do the grant. Everything else I'm going to say yes to. And if no one else from the council wants to speak until I open it up to the floor, I will open it up to the floor, but I'll give, oh, I think, uh, excuse me, Councilmember Harris, I do believe you had a comment.
Yes, I did. And my comment was similar to yours in that I would much prefer to have this as a grant only. I don't want it to be a loan. I think our businesses have suffered enough. And then I had a question in regard to because of the CBPG grant, um, there's a, um, portion that says, uh, there needs to be, like, we've got to keep their employees in place. And, you know, that may not be possible. I think most businesses want to keep their employees, but who knows what tomorrow brings, especially with, as we've all noted, the yo-yo, um, sort of atmosphere with, uh, the governor and his approach to, uh, COVID. So I, I, I'm wondering if there, if, if they have to maintain the number of jobs that they start with, um, when they apply for the grant throughout or whether that can be adjusted based on circumstances. So I need clarification on that, but that's what I would advocate for. More flexibility.
Mr. City Manager, did you want to comment on that?
Yes, if I can invite Emily Cantu, our Housing Services Director, to speak to that. She's most familiar with that one.
Yes, hi, this is Emily Cantu, the Housing Services Director, and thank you for your question, uh, Councilmember Harris. I, I believe we do have the ability to provide some flexibility if the businesses close by no fault of their own, of course, with everything going on, then, uh, we can allow them time after they reopen to complete the six month period for job retention.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Mitch.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Okay, sorry. Uh, just really quickly, I, I, I wanted to say I would also support, uh, the grant proposal, um, for the, for the monies, uh, for the businesses. My question would be to, uh, Ms. Cantu, and that is that if, if a business, if somebody who is applying for this goes out of business, if they lose their business or they lose their employees, hopefully that doesn't happen, but if it does, and we have to think of all probabilities, they don't have to pay this back, right? This is a grant and they're no longer going to be able to meet the terms of the grant and they can't keep their employees for six months, obviously because they went out of business. So in that scenario, what happens?
Yeah, in order for the grant to not be repaid, a business, uh, according to the. In order for the grant to not be repaid, a business, according to the federal CDBG guidelines, the business would need to meet the six-month time period.
So they would have to be able to keep, they have to be able to keep their business open for six months and keep at least one employee who's of that status in order to keep that money, otherwise they got to give it back.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. That was my question.
Okay, great question. Thank you very much. We'll open it up to public comment. Is there anybody from public comment?
I have Brooke Fox. I'll open your mic.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I just have a quick statement to read on behalf of downtown Vacaville. So on behalf of our 600-plus businesses who call downtown Vacaville home, we thank the council for its desire to offer Vacaville businesses monetary relief to help sustain operations during the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and resulting stay-at-home orders. After reading the draft program materials, we have the following recommendations. Number one, the program should consist of forgivable loans and/or grants. Number two, all business types and reopening phases should be allowed to submit an application. Therefore, every business owner who can demonstrate hardship and apply for assistance. A preference can be given to phase two or three if that satisfies the council's desire to further assist certain sectors. Point three, the program funds should be available to independent contractors as well as corporations. Over 250 personal care practitioners work downtown, and they are struggling to make ends meet. Yesterday's announcement by the state marked their second closure since the day of, since the stay-at-home orders began in March. With respect to the continued uncertainty ahead, consider relaxing eligibility requirements as that preference is given, so that preference is given to businesses who have not received SBA funding as opposed to making it required. So that could open it up to more businesses. Next point, consider setting aside a portion of CDBG funds for placemaking projects which make downtown a more attractive destination to shop, live, and work overall, i.e. lighting, signage, parking lots, creation of a clean and safe team, install permanent parklets, et cetera. And finally, with commercial property vacancies rising, consider using a small percentage of these funds to assist entrepreneurs looking to open a new business in Vacaville. The COVID-19 outbreak and resulting closures have created an unprecedented crisis for our hard-working local business community in the heart of Vacaville. This program is an opportunity for city leaders to show they stand side by side with downtown shop owners to navigate this crisis together. Thank you for your efforts and consideration on this matter.
Thank you so much. Any other comments?
I see three additional hands. Caller ending in 488, I'll open your mic.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Tim Padden and the rest of the group. Bravo to you on the grant stuff. Wasn't expecting that. Good to see that coming from you. Anyway, my item was about the senior meals program, which was part of this agenda item. But when this item came up at the June 9 meeting, I had several concerns, especially regarding the request that the $12,600 come from the general fund. I see now that the money will not be coming from the general fund, but there, but will be used through CDBG funding, which is such an appropriate use. So thank you to all who are making that happen, who work together, make that happen, and I look forward to the next steps in all of this. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next caller?
Lynn, I'll open your mic.
Am I, am I being heard? Hello?
Yes, yes, we can hear you clear. Go ahead.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for the time, City Council. It's a pleasure to be here, and I'm glad that I caught this meeting. I also, I'd like to chime in on the first woman where she had made some requests in there for possibly maybe widening the opportunity for new entrepreneurs and businesses that want to open up downtown to be able to apply for these loans as well. I, up to like last week, I'd been speaking with Don Burrows and his office about possibly opening up a business in the midst of all the COVID thing, but we had already started that conversation. So to hear the, this opportunity might be there, just know that there is an entrepreneur that, I have a business that could greatly benefit downtown, I feel, and I'd be happy to introduce the whole concept to you and all that, and I'm close to getting something to Tim, actually, so that you will see something. But please keep that in consideration, and I hope you will allow that to be possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Next caller?
Caller ending in 962, I'll open your mic.
Hi, everyone, this is Christina Palmer. Thank you so much for bringing this to our city, and I really appreciate it. I just had a quick question. There is some of us business owners that don't have employees, and I know you've touched on it, but could you expand on that a little bit more? Sometimes I do use independent contractors for certain events, but mainly I don't have employees. What would you do for situations like that?
Yep, this is Emily Cantu, the housing services director, and if you are a sole proprietor, you can meet the low-income employee requirement by being within the income limits yourself. So if it's a single owner who runs the business with no employees, if they're under the income limit, they would be eligible, you would be eligible.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
I see no additional hands on this item.
Then I'll close public comment, and if council doesn't have any other comments, I think I'll just reiterate, because I believe everyone was on board, we're going to say yes to the, the idea, we're going to say a grant instead of a loan, and I will make a motion.
Hey, Ron, can I make one comment really quick?
Absolutely, sir. Thank you for jumping in.
So I agree with everything you just said. I really do like that new business idea, though, too, and I don't know how you guys feel about that, but there are quite a few vacant storefronts, and I do think to some extent we should take care of existing businesses first. So maybe if there are funds left over, if there's a way to wait things, I know there's other entrepreneurs that are waiting to open businesses right now, and I think that is a brilliant idea. I don't know how the rest of the group feels, but I wanted to bring that up.
I'm glad you brought it up. I guess I should have said something before I made the motion, but, and I do want to help out new businesses, but the reason why we brought this to light and we wanted to bring this is because businesses have been under fire since March 16th, and we're trying to bail those folks out and make sure that they survive. I do feel for people that want to open, and maybe there'll be an idea down the road, but I really want to keep this for the businesses that have been suffering for the last four months and make sure that we save those businesses so we don't lose them. And I think I will stick with my motion, but absolutely, I agree with you, Councilmember Sullivan. I think that's an idea that we need to think of, and maybe we can bring it back to another council meeting, where we can discuss how we could help businesses that are trying to open. So thank you for that, but I'm going to keep my motion the way it is.
Can I ask one more clarifying question of staff?
Absolutely.
Sorry, and that's fine, I totally get that, that makes sense. The other piece of that is I just don't want to get local businesses caught in like procedural, you know, purgatory where they, it sounds like it works and it doesn't quite work. We know that a lot of these businesses downtown are going to be hair salons and barbers, and they operate kind of weird business models sometimes where you have an independent contractor, you have kind of unique employment relationships. So I just would hate for us to set up a structure or a system that sounds fantastic, and then we put all these business owners through this process and find out because of the employee structure of their business or something else, they don't qualify. So my only request is that staff really do a thorough kind of double-check scrub on the CDBG requirements and the common types of, especially hair salons, nail salons, barbers downtown, because I think they're some of the ones that got hit the most, and I could just see them getting caught in this procedural, you know, catch-22. I just don't want to set them up for that. So I'm hoping staff can analyze that, and then maybe remove any roadblocks if possible, and if there are roadblocks they think are going to be major, bring it back to, not to slow this down at all, but to let council know that maybe we need to discuss some roadblocks outside of this program if they foresee those.
That's another great comment, and I'm going to say that under B, number three, that's what we're going to do, is we're going to give the city manager the ability to make minor modifications, and I agree with you, you know, we don't want one simple thing to actually end up crippling a business, but I believe that with my motion, the city manager will be able to look on a case-by-case basis and make sure that we're doing the right thing, and then if he needs to, he can bring it back to the city council without holding this hostage. We'll move forward with this, and we can move forward with that. So again, if you're okay with that, and there's my motion, and Harris, second, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yeah.
Ashburn?
Hi.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beatty?
Aye.
Aaron Roulet?
Aye. And thank you again, Tim, that was a great presentation, and I'm hoping this absolutely helps our businesses moving forward. We'll move to item 9C. Mr. City Manager, would you like to start that off for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. This next item is a discussion regarding a proposed procedures, policies and procedures manual for the city council. Our city clerk, Michelle Thornburg, and our city attorney, Melinda, will be making the presentation for you tonight.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. As the city manager mentioned, the item before you tonight addresses something that we believe is ripe for consideration, which is preparation of a city council policies and procedures manual. As council members, you serve as really the board of directors for the city, making rules and policy decisions that impact over 100,000 people who live, work, shop, and play here in Vacaville when we're allowed to do that. In the capacity, in that capacity, your actions and operations are guided by various laws, they're guided by provisions in the municipal code, and a variety of unwritten, written and unwritten practices and policies. However, the city has never really consolidated those governing rules and practices that guide your operations into a single spot. So the council has a very good opportunity now, we believe, prior to the transition to district elections and the addition of two council seats, to actually consolidate those operating policies and memorialize your practices into a manual that will serve as a couple roles, as a good reference for the city council, existing city council members, and as a guiding document for new council members. So with that in mind, staff has prepared a draft table of contents for a manual for your consideration and input tonight. We've tried to consolidate the core practices and procedures that we think will serve as good guidelines for the council. You have a full table of contents in your staff report, and a lot of what's in that table of contents and what we recommend to be eventually in the manual is required by state law or is subject to an existing city policy or is fairly standard practice, and so we won't go over a lot of that tonight. But what we've done for tonight's purposes is pulled out some of the policy areas we think may need more extensive discussion, and some areas where council will have discretion in forming or changing existing policies. And so we thought we would just highlight some of those for you tonight, so you get a flavor of what's coming your way, and we're also seeking your input on whether or not there are any other areas you would like to see covered in the manual. And so after we get your direction tonight, our game plan is to prepare and bring back smaller chunks of the manual over three or four meetings for your input. We would attempt to distribute the items that may take more input or discussion and more time really to discuss. We distribute those over different meetings. So the chunks of the manual may not come back in the exact order of the table of content, but ultimately it will all be in that order. And ultimately, after you've had input on all of the sections, we would bring the complete manual back for your final approval. And so with that, we can walk through quickly some of the contents in the policy or that we're recommending. If I can have the next slide, please. Great. So the manuals would start off with an introduction and overview, and that would cover just the general purpose and the intent of the policies. It would also briefly touch on some of the guiding documents and statutory requirements that govern, govern your actions and your operations. Next, we would have an orientation, a section on orientation of new members. Following that would be city council organization and general powers and responsibilities. In that, in that section, we think there are a couple of areas that may require some further discussion by the council, and that would be a section on at-large government and governance, excuse me, and what that's really addressing is the fact that while council members in the future, starting in November, will be elected by district, their obligation is really to act with the whole city in mind and for the benefit of the entire city. So it would address that type of issue. Another policy that you may want to consider is selection of the vice mayor. Currently, we have a system that works, and it works because there's a council of, you know, with one mayor and four members. When we go to seven members on the city council, we may need to rethink how we select the vice mayor and put some different policies in practice. The next section under organization and general powers would be general powers and responsibilities, and the item under that section that could require some discussion is core responsibilities and responsibilities of public office, and there you'd be looking at an opportunity to highlight some of council's expectations of the sitting members in conducting the city's business. Next slide, please. Then it would move on to cover conflicts of interest and liability of council members themselves. Next section would include city council meetings, agenda guidelines, and conduct. And in that section, some of the key provisions, I think, that would be of interest and require further discussion would be under kind of the nuts and bolts of how the city council meetings work, how you handle absences of the mayor, vice mayor, or council members, you know, things as simple as how you determine the seating on the dais, and also length of meetings. So some cities have limits on how long they will allow their meetings to go, or for instance, not introducing substantive matters after a certain hour. Then under agenda and notice guidelines, some things I think that will require some discussion are preparation of the agenda, actually, who's involved in the preparation and who sets the agenda, how items are placed on the agenda by council members and by the public, and then public notice and outreach. We, I think council recently adopted a policy on that, but this is an area where you do have some discretion in certain circumstances. Next slide, please. That would be followed by conduct of meetings, and a couple areas you could address are protocols, so things as simple as, you know, how somebody gets to the floor, how a council member gets to the floor, and the manner and order of voting, and then decorum at council members, at council meetings, so basically how people treat each other. Then we move on to communications from council, and things you'd want to consider are who's the ceremonial representative? Do all council members serve in that role, or is it the mayor, or mayor and vice mayor, or how that's determined? Also, written communications. So who gets to represent the council's position or policy, and who gets to speak for the city? And, you know, things like use of city letterhead, who gets to use city letterhead and when that's appropriate. Next slide, please. And then that would be followed by sections on interactions with staff, council interactions with staff, support that would be provided to the city council, that would be staff support, technology support, those types of things. And then it would just be followed with some basic sections on other helpful information resources, covering some of the acronyms and appendices, whatever appendices would be needed. One we thought of would be to include existing council policies so that they're all in one place. Next slide, please. And so with that, what we're really looking for is direction. And so, uh, with that, what we're really looking for is, uh, direction as to whether we're on the right path, um, if there are any items that you, uh, want to add or emphasize. Uh, and also I have the, obviously with me are the city clerk and the, the city manager, and we're all happy to answer, uh, any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. I will open it to the council before I open it up to the public. Anybody from the council wanna speak before I bring it to the public?
I have three.
Sure, I'll.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Nolan.
Council member Sullivan, go ahead, you started, go ahead.
All right, guys. Um, so one of the things I didn't see, Melinda, was council member expectations. So, I mean, it, it is kind of awkward, like you get elected, the next day you're a council member, and you're like, what does that mean? So you kind of ask your peers, and everyone has a different answer, so I think a clear expectation in terms of what your guideline or what your expectations as a council member are when it comes to, you know, all kinds of things. How do you respond across correspondence, or what is your role with, so like a clear guide would be kind of helpful. Um, the one area that I find is kind of awkward sometimes is we'll have comments from the floor, and we'll have someone from the public that comes up very impassioned, very upset about something, or very kind of passionate about something, and we have to just kind of sit there and stare at them because we can't respond back. So I think maybe a section that talks about, um, you know, how to best kind of diffuse that situation or handle that situation. And I've seen other councils where like during council member comments, I'm sorry, during comments from the floor, there'll be something on the PowerPoint that says, you know, due to the Brown Act, council members cannot respond to you, like, don't take this as a show of being cold, or, or whatever, it's because they can't respond back. And then my last comment, and you may have had this, maybe I missed it, was committee selections. Um, it, we go through this every year, and we have a process, I think, but it might be good to include this in the document as well, but I think this is fantastic, I really, really like it. Um, the Institute for Local Government has a couple classes and a couple guides on, um, high-performing councils or attributes of high-performing councils. Um, I, I would recommend maybe staff just take a gander at some of those docs, they just, they're, they're really good. Um, but I think you guys are on the right track, and I really like what I'm seeing.
Council member Harris?
Yeah, thank you. I would like to say I think you're on the right track as well, and I think that taking it in, as you called it, I think, small bites, to make sure that everything is covered appropriately and comprehensively is important moving forward, especially since there will be a larger council in place. So I, I am in full agreement with, um, you know, what's been placed before us tonight, and I, and I do agree with Councilman Sullivan that, uh, some of the items that he had, if they are not covered in this particular document, then I, I think they should be included. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Mitch. Mashburn, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Uh, uh, two items that I didn't see there, but that I think, uh, um, would need to, need to be, or should be, um, addressed. One is, uh, um, council communications, uh, with labor and labor groups, um, uh, you know, so that they understand exactly what is allowed and not allowed legally. Um, and then, uh, because that's been questioned before. And then also, um, I think we should have something in there about closed session and about the, uh, sanctity of that, and about the, um, Brown Act, and about all of the things that go along with closed session, uh, as a guideline, uh, and a policy for council members. That's it.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Beatty?
Uh, yeah, a couple things. I would like to agree with Councilman Mashburn there. I, part of the policies and procedures should clearly identify council members speaking to labor groups during negotiations. Things like that's a really confusing part of the whole process as well. And, and I, although I've only been on about a year and a half, um, I got this dichotomy of being new to the council but being a pretty old person, and wondering why this is a question now when it's never been a question before. So I'd ask that to the city attorney directly. Why is this a question now when it doesn't seem to have been a question before?
Are you referring to why are we putting together the, the manual now?
I guess the word you use with memorialize.
Oh, there, I, I, I think just because over, over time, we see that we're getting more questions, both from, from members of the council and from the public about, um, how things are done, where do we find this? Um, you know, so it, it just kind of became clear to us as we've been, been, you know, going along, that it would be helpful for everyone to have, um, you know, all the policies, kind of the, the practices, how you, uh, interact, um, in, in one place. And then, again, there have been practices in place that have just been there, and that's just always, how they've always been done, but they have never been written down. And, um, it leaves, you know, for, especially for new council members, I think, and for the public, it leads to some confusion. So, um, so becoming more clear that it would be helpful to have those written down and, and approved by the, the council, because some council members may have different, um, understandings.
Okay, so I, I, I guess, again, I'm focusing on, you know, some small words, I suppose, but it's, it's never been an understanding, uh, with council members over the number of years we've had a council, what protocol would be? So this, this is a new concern?
I don't think it's a new concern.
Um, I was actually, I was actually asking city attorney, this, the reason this is being brought forward is that it's a new concern?
Well, yeah, I think, I think actually it's, it's an opportunity with, again, um, you know, the, the transition to members being elected by district and by adding two new, two members, uh, to the council, I think it's an opportunity to, um, put a good guidebook in, into place, uh, to, to clarify everybody's expectations, so, so that everybody's on the same page.
Okay. Yeah, I guess one of the things I'm, I'm starting with is the difference between memorialize and immortalize. I mean, oftentimes councils end up going back and changing, uh, municipal codes, or even state legislators end up going back and picking up a law that was memorialized at some point that no longer has application. So it's a concern about the memorialization of a process that has been effective up until present, but now for some reason needs to be revisited.
Well, and, and, and council member Beatty, the, um, the council, any council would have the opportunity to revisit some of the policies, revisit the manual, and make, um, changes as, as times change, as, as needs change, um, so, so, um, so I apologize for the use of the world word memoriali- memorialization, I can't even say it. Um, but we're, we're trying to assemble all these policies i- in, into one place.
Okay, um, any other comments from the council?
One last quick one, Ron, sorry, I thought about.
Council member Sullivan, go ahead.
But Melinda, one of the other ones that I always have problems with, and I can never remember if I should disclose or not disclose, or what constitutes a conflict of interest for a council member, and when should we declare something on the dais? When should we consult with you? I just, I never know, and I, it'd be nice to have a clear guide, because I always have to email you, and that would be, it'd be helpful to have that written out.
Yep, ve- very good, yes. Uh, we'll, we'll include that in the table of contents, a- and the manual.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, seeing no, no one else from the council, I'll open it up to public comment.
I see caller ending in two one one, I'll open your mic.
Thank you very much.
Hi, uh, this is Alicia Minion, um, and I'm, I'm glad that there's gonna be police formalized policies and procedures. And I, I, I didn't look at the table of contents, you know, I looked at it very quickly. Was there a social media policy on that, uh, table of contents? Uh, and then the other question I had, uh, that was just brought up on conflicts of interest, uh, is will, will, uh, the staff be considering implementing, uh, policies that are more stringent than, say, what's in the state statute? Um, and then, and then, which I think would be a good idea. Uh, so even though you might have a conflict of interest, that's not something that's required to be disclosed in the 700, it still may be, uh, so, a council person could still have a significant conflict that creates, uh, bias, and I think that, that those types of situations should be considered. Um, in addition, uh, there's also attorney general opinion, so maybe it's not something embedded in, in the law, that I'm hoping that staff will look at attorney general opinions with regard to the different types of conflicts of interest, uh, that council members may be subjected to, say, to decision that benefits, you know, their, their sons or daughters or their spouses. Uh, I'm hoping that that gets, uh, really vetted and covered, so that you have a robust policy on conflict of interest, so that really the public can be ensured that the decisions are, are made with objectivity. Uh, and then, uh, the, the policy are, well, I was really kind of unclear, it would be nice to know which portions of the manual are new, where there wasn't anything formalized. Uh, and then sometimes there might have been practices, uh, that have been going on over the years, that maybe there was no policies and procedures whatsoever, no oversight. It, it would be nice to know which areas, uh, where that was the case. And, um, and then I was wondering too, uh, how will the public be able, other than waiting for a portion of the manual to come up during a meeting, how can the public, uh, participate in providing, uh, recommendations on what to, what else to include in, in the manual under the different sections? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Melinda, would you like to answer some of those questions?
Sure, sure, I'll do my best. Uh, so first of all, with, oh, sorry, with respect to the social media, uh, uh, recommendation, that is not currently in the table of contents, so if the council, uh, would like to see something, uh, along those lines, we can certainly direct us, um, I, I, I think it's probably a good, uh, suggestion. Um, conflicts of interest are, uh, will be dealt with in the manual, and, um, council certainly has the ability to, um, to require more strict, uh, conflict of interest, um, expectations of itself, so that's some, that's a decision that the council, uh, that the council could make at that time. Um, when, when we evaluate conflicts of interest, um, certainly attorney general opinions are a part of that overall, uh, evaluation, so what that looks like in the manual, I'm not exactly sure yet, but that is a part of the, um, whole evaluation of whether or not a conflict of interest, um, exists, uh, those, those AG opinions. Um, with respect to which portions of the, the manual are, um, you know, are cover existing policies and which are, um, you know, new, something that the, a council hasn't addressed by a formal policy, I, I think probably what will happen is, um, as, as we go through and, uh, summarize for the council, the, the recommendations in the policies, when they're written, we would call out where, uh, what are existing policies, uh, and then we would, um, you know, it, so, so it would be apparent which are new policies. I think one of, uh, our ideas is also to indicate where there's, uh, state law or municipal provisions, um, that, that are in play, we would call those out as well. Um, and, and at this moment, you know, the, the public comment, um, period, like, like you're doing right now, um, Ms. Minion, um, and when we bring the other sections forward, that would be the opportunity, I think, for the public to, to have input. Um, so I hope that answers your question.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have any other callers?
Caller ending in nine six two, I'll open your mic.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, this is Christina Palmer. I think this is a great idea. This is just, this is just helps him so much, and as a former commissioner myself, and working with the city staff and the public, I, I would hope that maybe this, uh, trickles down to the commissions also, so that there is more transparency, uh, not only for the public, but for also for the commissions as well as city council and the mayor. Uh, you know, I see all the time where people that aren't fully educated on local government, how it's so easy to, to, uh, complain or say that, that our city council or mayor are doing, mayor is doing something wrong, but if they understood the policies a little bit better, and if there was an actual book, like a manual that you're making, I think that it would actually protect you guys as well as, as the, uh, the citizens to be able to know the avenues, to know the avenues better, to create, uh, change if, if they chose to. Uh, and for example, and I just wanted to, uh, to address this really quick, on the homepage of the website, we talked earlier about the virtual town hall, how if you clicked on it, you would be able to see the, the Zoom information for the virtual town hall, but if you click on tonight's meeting, there is no information on how to get to the Zoom. There is a, a link on there to see the live video of your guys' meeting tonight, but publicly, there's no way for anybody to see it on the website unless I'm missing something. So I think that with this manual, by having more clarity on and transparency on the guidelines, it, it's just really gonna help council, the mayor, and, and the citizens of Vacaville. And, and I'm wondering if, if there could be a way to have more information for these meetings and how to get into the Zoom meetings on the website.
I do believe, and I'll ask the city manager, we, we do, and, and at least on my agenda, and I, I apologize, because I don't go on to the website, but on my agenda, which should be the agenda on the website, it has the Zoom link right at, right at the top underneath, uh, remote participation and public comment. Is, is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, that information is on the agenda. I think the, um, the, um, it also might be, uh, another opportunity for us to put it, that link on the webpage and not necessarily have to go find it on the agenda itself as well. So we can, we can duplicate that, just to make sure that we're getting the word out.
Great, thank you.
From what I see, from what I see, when you click on the event for tonight, if you click on it, there is a link for the agenda, but when you click on the agenda, uh, when you go on the actual agenda, and then I click on the agenda itself, I don't see the Zoom information on the PDF. Again, I could be wrong, but this is me trying to navigate to get to the Zoom. I actually have been on these calls for a while, and this is the first time I was able to get through just because of me trying to figure out how to do it. It, it had no fault of anybody else's, but if there was an easier way or a more clear version for people to get to it. Again, this is digressing.
I agree with you.
I'm just saying that the manual is awesome.
I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, we'll, we'll make sure that that, uh, is easy to access.
Thank you, thank you, and I do appreciate the comment, Christina. Is there anyone else for public comment?
I see no additional hands for this item.
Okay, great. Um, before we move on, because it's nothing that we're voting on, I, I wanted to, uh, thank our city attorney, um, you know, past year and a half as the new mayor.
I want to call our city manager in a lie again, right now.
Can, can we mute Christina? So what I was trying to say is, uh, I do, I do appreciate us taking a stab at this there. Um, I think the issue was a lot of past practice, uh, you know, uh, councilwoman Harris and council member Mashburn and myself have been on for a long time, and things carried from, you know, council to council to council, and some things have come up even in the last year and a half that I thought was a policy, and come to find out it was just past practice, not really a policy. So, um, there are things that we do need to clarify. Um, and on the other end, you know, especially when we're talking about conflict of interest, it's hard to write everything into, uh, this and say, oh, this will be a conflict and this will be a conflict, because forever there'll be each individual case that might be a different conflict. So I, I don't wanna jam too far, I guess, in the weeds, uh, thank you, Mr. Mashburn. Um, I just wanna make sure that we're at least making it easier, and Christina made a great point, uh, you know, making sure that even the commission, uh, has maybe a manual on how they should run, and I guess it would basically be the same policies, but, um, we can't go too deep and then find out that we missed a ton, which we probably will, or we go too deep and it misses something that is not a conflict. So right now, the way conflicts happen for us is each individual council member, when they feel that something's a conflict, they absolutely go to our attorney to make sure they keep themselves out of trouble. We swear an oath that we're going to do the best we can. We swear an oath that we're going to do the best we can as a public servant. You know, I don't mind walking down and making sure that certain things are in there. I just, there's no way you're going to cover every conflict of interest. And when you start writing things into, you know, this policy, it could actually hurt someone that doesn't have a conflict of interest if we get too far down the path. So I am excited about this. I think there's some things that we can really clear up, and I look forward to the next presentation. So any other council member, I don't want to cut anybody off. If any other council member has anything that they would like to mention or will move on to the last item.
The only other comment that Christina brought up that I
Councilmember Sullivan?
Sorry.
That's okay.
I thought it was interesting, and I've never really understood the role between the council members and the commissioners. So like, I know we get formal motions from them sometimes or other directives, but is there supposed to be engagement outside of the formal meetings? Like, what is our process or kind of how do we interact with each other outside of kind of the formal meetings? Or do we at all? So one thing that would be helpful for me, too, is kind of the roles and expectations on interacting between the council and the commissions, if possible.
Great, thank you. Great comment. Seeing no other council comments, we will wrap that one up. We'll move to item nine D. Mr. City Manager, do you want to start that off, or are we going to let Chief Conception start that off?
Sure, I'll kick it off. Thank you, Mayor. This is another biweekly update for the city council regarding our current COVID-19 status. A lot has happened in the past day. Chief Conception is going to provide that to you. And then following his presentation, I can expand a little bit on what we talked about on an earlier item with regards to the city's response to that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Conception.
Thank you, Aaron. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Here for another update on the COVID-19 situation. Next slide, please, Crystal. Starting off with the latest numbers with the state of California, as of today, California is up over 336,000 cases with 7,087 deaths. As compared to three weeks ago, the last update that I gave you at your council meeting, it's a total difference of 153,000 cases, so almost, almost double of what it was three weeks ago, and an additional 1,507 deaths. One of the new numbers that they are, that that the governor has been focusing on, and now that they are reporting, is what is the positivity rate of the tests that are being administered? And the 14-day, over the last 14 days, in the state of California, they're running at a 7.1% positive rate as far as the number of tests that they're administering. Moving down to more local, as far as Solano County, we're up to, as of 4:30 this afternoon, 2,313 cases. That is an increase of 94 cases day over day, so Monday to Tuesday. There are 94 more cases in the county, and as compared to three weeks ago, when I last updated you, that's more than, more than doubled, so it's 1,293 additional cases. As far as the active cases, there are 101 more active cases as compared to three weeks ago. We're at 322 active cases and and more than double the number of people that are currently hospitalized. So we have 47 people hospitalized, and the number of deaths is up to 31 deaths in Solano County. And Solano County reports not a 14-day rate, but a seven, seven-day average positivity rate, and that rate is just slightly under the state of California at 6.7%. In the state, in the city of Vacaville, we are up to 371 cases with increase of 17 day over day, and 233 cases increased over the last three weeks. Next slide, please. As Aaron said, there has been quite a few changes as far as the state is concerned. Starting off with just after the last council meeting on the 28th, on July 1st, right before the the weekend, the July 4th weekend, the governor included several counties, Solano County included on a watch list of counties, and what that included was that that it included no more indoor dining. And then on July 13th, just yesterday, was the revised order that seems to take us back as far as the counties or actually the, almost the entire state, back to square one, if you will. And so that revised order, bars, pubs, brew pubs and breweries are to be closed unless they have, they also serve food, so if they don't serve, they don't serve food at their location, bars, pubs, brew pubs and breweries are completely, are ordered completely closed. And then as far as closing indoor operations, and here's the key word here is indoor operations, is gyms and fitness centers, places of worship, protest, offices for non-critical infrastructure sectors. So back, going back to the earlier days of COVID, when we were talking about essential versus non-essential businesses and offices, those offices need to close again. And then personal care services, even though it's just recent that they were able to nail salons, massage parlors and tattoo parlors were just able to open back up about, just a few weeks ago, actually about two, three weeks ago, they have been ordered by the governor closed again unless they can operate outside. And then as well as hair salons and barber shops, malls also are are ordered closed. As far as the outlet mall, that is considered an outdoor location, so that is able to stay open. Unfortunately, there is no timeframe on this order, so we don't know how long, we haven't even been given an expectation of how long or a timeframe is how long we can expect these orders to stay in place. We just know the orders are in place for now until further notice. So how does that affect City Vacaville? Next slide, please, Crystal. We really have no choice but to comply with the July 13th order, as Solano County is doing the same thing, complying with with that order. And the city, along with a lot of other local jurisdictions in the state, received a letter from the governor talking about enforcement and basically what he is saying is that if we don't have an enforcement plan or don't have a plan as far as either, as far as complying to the order, then it may affect our ability to get part of the CARES Act, CARES Act funding. So what we're doing, say Vacaville, as we, with the revised order, as you can imagine, we're getting a lot of, a lot of complaints into code enforcement, and we are continuing our education and engagement efforts. And to the point, I'm going to turn this over now to Aaron at our, we had a briefing this, at noon today, and because the order says that those, those businesses, if they can't, they just can't operate inside, if they can bring their, their businesses outdoors, then they can continue to conduct business. So that's why we're exploring possibilities of expanding what you ratified earlier today as far as the outdoor dining model, where we were looking at the possibility of expanding that to other business, other types of businesses. So Aaron, you want to take over?
Thank you, Chief. And just to build on that, you know, given the governor's order and the success that we're having so far with our outdoor dining program, you know, should the council feel a desire to expand on that program sooner than later, we believe that there's opportunities to work with some of the other businesses on that list, unfortunately, that may have an opportunity to expand their businesses to outdoor areas so that we can keep them going as well. And so, but before we do that, one of the things that we're, we're being tasked with to work with the business owners, as well as our big four partners with the Chamber and the Bid, and Vacaville, is to find out just exactly if there are other criteria that govern those businesses that will allow them or won't allow them to do their businesses outdoors. Just as an example, one of the things that we're following up on is that we did hear that perhaps the licensing board for barbers and hair salons may have challenges with their licensing board. And so we want to follow up with them, make sure that that's not the case so that we're not offering something that's just going to get them in trouble. But in the meantime, we do want to act quickly on this if the council's supportive of it. We're thinking that if the council does believe that there's an opportunity here to expand our outdoor program for other business uses, that we can, if if you give me the direction, I can essentially do another executive order, executive order as the Director of Emergency Services to enact another plan until we can bring that back to the council at their July 28th meeting. During that time, if the council also likes, we are prepared to explore other ways to expand the program just beyond sidewalks and parking opportunities as well as public plazas. So we're looking at anything and everything that we can encourage businesses to stay alive during this newest order. And so with that, we will turn it over to the council and seek your direction on that matter.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and I do appreciate it. I'm going to ask just for clarification from our city attorney. Obviously, I asked about this on an earlier item nine A, and I'm sure the council all wants to go ahead and move to do this, but do you want us to just give direction or do you want us to vote? And if we're going to vote, do we move that to eleven, item 11, report to the city council, make a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor, at this point, it would just be to give direction to staff.
Okay. Well, then, for that, I, again, I'm going to just reiterate what I said earlier. Absolutely, I want to give you free rein to go out there and help these businesses. And I'm sure other council members will agree. Any other council members?
Sure. Just side, Melina.
We'll go with Councilmember Harris first.
Yeah, I, I think any business we can help, whether we, you know, if they're, if we can get them cleared to do business outside, we should be doing that, whatever kind of business it is. Because what we're going through right now is just so much of a hardship. And so anything that we can do to give you the flexibility, City Manager, to get businesses to stay open, I am 100% for it.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Any other council members I know, was it, is that?
This is me.
Councilmember Mashburn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would concur with Councilwoman Harris on, on that, and I fully support staff moving forward with any and all businesses to help them. But I would also like to have staff look at and see if there is a possibility that a lot of those businesses don't have the space to do that. You know, they've got two parking spaces, three parking spaces in front of their business. They don't have the ability to expand outward. But I was wondering if there might be some way that we as a city, if we have city lots, if we have city spaces where we might be able to help some of these businesses facilitate staying open, like a gym, if it's non-inclimate weather and they have the ability to use a portion of a park or a portion of a ball field that's not in use, not that I think there's going to be any ball fields not in use, but you get what I'm saying, to do some outdoor cardio or to do some type of fitness training for folks in an outdoor environment where where proper precautions can be taken and they can stay in business, I think we should look at ways that the city can help them do that, as long as it's not a conflict or a gift of funds or one of those things, to facilitate them still being able to deliver some type of service. And then, again, I would also like to see them try and work with some of those businesses, like the pubs and those that are specifically called out, the breweries, to see if there's some way they could do some type of outdoor service for their clients, although I know that they're regulated by the ABC, so there'd be some conflict. And again, we'd have to look at that and make sure we weren't breaking any laws. But I, I would like to see if there's some way that we as a city, with, with our resources could also help, I guess is what I'm getting at. So, thank you, sir.
Great, thank you very much. No other council comments, I'll open it up to public comment first.
Comment on Sullivan.
Okay, sorry, Councilmember Sullivan, go ahead, sir.
I completely and unequivocally agree with all of the comments before me. I think all, all three so far have made excellent points. I really do support Councilwoman Mashburn's suggestion of using city facilities, landlots, et cetera, et cetera, to get creative and allow businesses to kind of open, you know, in kind of unique ways. I kind of envision like a farmer's market or like the downtown Main Street market, but like full-time. And so I really, really do like these ideas, and I would be fully supportive of anything we could do for any business to get creative and get them outside within the guidelines and the codes. One of the other things that is kind of sort of happening, I think, is there are some businesses that have the ability to operate out of their, out of their homes. And so I know there's some like hairstylists and probably some tattoo parlors and whatnot that maybe have home studios. So I'm wondering if we could provide them, you know, tips or regulations or ways that they can expand their operations safely in those areas as well, or if there's anything we could do to help provide some guidance on that. And then my last piece is, the one thing we didn't really talk about tonight, or maybe I just missed it in the presentation, is there wasn't much discussion about the faith-based community, and I know, I have a feeling this order probably impacts them pretty heavily as well. So I know the city manager convened a group of local pastors and faith-based leaders a while back to kind of discuss the ins and outs. And so anything we can do to inform that community or also provide creative and flexible, you know, advice or help, I think would be great as well. Because I know we just kind of opened that back up, and I have a feeling there may be some impacts there. So I'd like to maybe have the city manager also convene that work group again and provide some guidance and assistance there along the same lines of what we're talking about tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. If we don't have any more council comments, I will open it up to the floor. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak?
I have Brooke Fox, I'll open her mic.
Good evening, just a couple downtown-related comments. Thank you so much for taking this up so quickly as well. Thank you for that. I've gotten a flurry of calls, mostly from operators of fitness studios that would like to go ahead and, you know, take their operations to the park, et cetera. And so I'm hopeful that we can work towards that. And I actually feel that in the long run, it's an opportunity for the city to perhaps make some alliances with some of these businesses and provide, you know, sign them up for long-term program facilitation in the future. So I'm excited for that, and I'm, I'm at the ready to help with any kind of rollout that's necessary to get everybody back to work.
Thank you very much, Brooke. Anyone else from public comment?
I see no additional hands.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager, I think we were very clear. Do you have any questions of the council?
No, I would just like to thank all the council for your support of this effort. If I could just clarify or just share with you some thoughts that we talked about today, we were kind of treating this as a, as a multiple-phase effort because the easiest to implement right away will be just really an expansion of our existing program where we have forms and paperwork that already addresses, you know, liability issues and those kinds of things because we are inviting people into public areas, so that's an important component. And we want to make sure that it's not a, a border to prevent them from, from using it. And so while we're expanding that program right away, the other areas that we are exploring are many of the same ideas that the council shared with us just now. So I appreciate the, the feedback and the support for that. We'll be looking into those areas about using city-owned properties and parks and those kinds of things. Of course, with that, we'll need to make sure that we're, again, addressing all of the, the guidelines and usage requirements and things, making sure that we don't overbook or how we do all those things. But you've given us a lot of great feedback. We'll make sure to, you know, put that in a program that will start right away. And then if it requires, you know, something a little bit beyond the scope of that, we'll bring that back to the council at the next meeting to get your endorsement and, and support of. And then between now and then, we'll also be working on a very aggressive outreach campaign to be, meeting with the ministerial groups, with our business clusters that, you know, myself and our economic development team were meeting with on a regular basis while we were, you know, working on the reopening plan. So plan. So we'll be very active on this effort. And again, thank you for your support.
Thank you. And that segues into item 10. So, Mr. City Manager, did you want to add anything under reports of City Manager?
The only thing that I just wanted to add, going back to the item on the cannabis taxes, is that I did have a chance to take a quick look through the actual ordinance itself. And right there, under the intent language, it specifies very clearly that the intent of the ordinance is just for the tax. It does not give approval to any other types of uses. Those would require subsequent approvals. So I just wanted to add that.
Okay, perfect. I appreciate that update. I'm going to move to item 11, reports of any city council members. City council members, anyone wants to speak? I do have one item, and I did bring it up earlier. But I'd like to bring it up again. I am excited that our chief, Carly, from the police department, will be hosting the virtual town hall. This is an opportunity for the citizens to discuss policies and ideas, to share updates on industry reform and best practices. This will be this Thursday, July 16. It will be at 6:30. It will be available by Zoom, because we can't get together still. If you have any questions beforehand, you can write it to townhallquestions@cityofvacaville.com. Those need to be in by 5:00 PM on Wednesday, July 15. If you have any hardship on trying to find the Zoom link, if you have any hardship on trying to get anything in, you can call us here at 707-449-5110. I apologize. No, 5100. I believe that's right. Right, Mrs. City Clerk?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we will move to item 12, payment of claims. I'll entertain motion from the council.
Move approval.
Second.
I got Harris and Mashburn second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Harris?
Yeah.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Mashburn?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Beatty?
Aye.
Mayor Rollet?
Aye. We'll move to item 13, which is closed session, which we do not have again tonight. So we'll move to item 14, adjournment, and we'll adjourn until next meeting, Tuesday, July 28. And good night, Vacaville.